We'll start from Commissioner Green and then each of us will either read off or discuss our top three priorities and that'll open it to discussion. Does that work? And then we can get into roads because that's absolutely clear in the document that you've provided as well as, you know, things like water, et cetera. Does that sound good? We're going to start at that level. So Commissioner Green, yes, did you have another idea for process?
So I, you know, we're not starting this from scratch, right? We've done this four years. This is at least the fourth time that I've done this. And I know it was three, but I came to one earlier.
That's right.
But the, and I would love to have, I would have hoped that this would have opened with an hour of here some of the major accomplishments and focuses that we had based on the history of this. And so that we can preempt a little bit of us coming forward with our priorities and saying, oh, well, Commissioner, we're already doing this or and so on. I mean, there's a lot of things that are a repeat of past years, right? And so I can come up and say, you know, we need to work on the SLDC and S, you know, strategic growth management plan. A variety of things that were put on there and I didn't specifically put them in our list here because I kind of wanted to see my priorities haven't changed so much over the year. I would wanted to see progress.
What accomplishments?
And so that would be, you know, Stephanie working with whoever the director is saying, this is a three minute presentation on last year where we left it last year.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much. And I hear you as well. And I saw the nod from Commissioner Kokari Stone that that is that she's in agreement. But I also recognize that Stephanie, this is your first round on this. So I think to that end, if we can have staff when we make those. For example, my mind big push last year was absolutely recognizing that we're here in service of the community. It's a customer service angle and I'd like to see that weight carried a whole lot more. But what you're bringing up is exactly that type of thing to what end if we've had success as they're coming up. Staff can make a statement regarding, well, these are the steps that have been done and this is why we've prioritized it this way. Does that work for staff? In other words, I'm asking to please make clear, don't just be in agreement that that would be a priority that would be served if you've been working on it. Because I have, and I understand everybody, you know, people like to be in agreement and feel good that everything's working. And then to find out, it's like, you guys have been doing it already. This is the time to really put that out there. What's been done if something, I think the battery's dying on this. What's been done, if something, I think the battery's dying on this. If something is, if something has been worked on and progress is being made, this is the time to disclose that, right? Your work is beyond respected here. Like, it is, it is, it is what gets done here. All we do is we're a bunch of talking heads with priorities, because we're working and listening to the community, or saying, you better do this, you better do this, and we're the conduit, and you all know what's being done with that regard, right? Does that make sense? You're the boots on the ground, and better than that, right? You're the what makes it happen. The wheels turn because of you all. So please don't hold back as we go over the priorities, and I appreciate that very much, Commissioner Green. So let's do it that way. We'll go over those priorities that we've each submitted, and have the opportunity to discuss after each commissioner, okay? And there may be some overlap among commissioners. I didn't necessarily notice, it doesn't matter, but if there is, that's a good thing, okay? So is that, that's going to be the process?
Chair Bustamante, I'm hearing different things, and I just want to be, I sat in on last year's strategic planning. I know Commissioner Johnson, again, we're at a disadvantage with the BCC that we can have a time to dis-synthesize it, and I did that this morning at five, because I wanted us to be a consolidated board. And that synthesis is being printed. I want us to have the chance for everyone to see that as well, because the staff has had time. I heard, and what I saw in emails, that the plan was, we would hear some updates with the amendment from Commissioner Green of, here's an evaluative synthesis, big-picture overview of what we've achieved from the last strategic plan, here's what the staff is proposing as priorities for this, then we go into discussion on how it aligns with the BCC as well, and we start knocking off and synthesizing common, commonalities. That, it seems like that would work. I mean, many of us have been in years of strategic planning, and it makes sense to say, what did we achieve so far?
I think what I just said is, we're going to get that as we go through the conversation. We will be doing that synthesis as we're going, and I appreciate the early effort that you made, but that is part of the brainstorming discussion session that'll happen here. Everything should come out on the table. Yes, it would have been, you know, I don't know if it would have been more efficient or less efficient to have had it all synthesized in advance, but the point of this meeting is exactly to do that. So let's go ahead and start with your first three priorities, Commissioner Green, and then we will have some discussion and move on to the next commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, I want to start at the most upper level of this, because there's an aspect that, of granularity later, but that at the most upper level, when we talk about our, our goals here, so the provide a safe community, sustainable and equitable communities, healthy community, highly skilled, transparent, and accessibility. Those are these upper-level goals that I agree with wholeheartedly. I just am, want to, want to bring in an aspect that Chair Bustamante brought up, which was the customer service aspect, accountability, and effectiveness. You know, these are areas here that I guess, you know, highly skilled, transparent, and accessible kind of speak to this, but not in quite the terms that the community can track, and we, as representatives of the community, can track. So at some point, I think that that is a, an additional community goal, especially when we're talking about bringing on a new ERP system, which is towards that goal of an effective and trackable and accountable community service, but to have our community, yeah, community, customer service orientation. So that is one of, I would say, upper, very upper-level aspect and filter for everything that we talk about here. And I think that when we do talk about specific granular things, that we have that as a fifth sort of guiding principle here, as a population goal. Then when we start to talk about specific projects or specific areas of focus, I do think that the strategic, our growth management operations, to make it more aligned in the planning side, and where we can have easier to permit, more effective community building development, specifically working on housing affordability, not just affordable housing, but housing affordability, and looking at the whole spectrum of housing, everything from second homes to single-room occupancy and, and supportive housing for people coming out of incarceration or out of homelessness. We need to look at the housing spectrum and really look at that for, really, the next year. This is probably the number-one pressing issue that I hear out in the community, whether it's, you know, my kids can't afford to come back to move to Santa Fe, or, you know, moving, you know, our staff at the county are moving to Rio Rancho, or out of the, out of the county because they can't afford housing. There's so many issues that really housing is the issue, and having some sort of, whether it's a study, and how it translates itself into our general plan and our, and our code is definitely a major priority. I also look at opportunities. I did not put this in my list, but as it's popped up in the last few weeks, you know, broadband, you know, we have opportunities with federal money coming, coming to Santa Fe and New Mexico as a whole, and the whole government, whole United States as a whole, and we are not as ready and prepared to take advantage of this in whatever format that needs to be. And that could be the county doing it, that could be a private partner doing it, it could be a public-private partnership, whatever the format is, we need to make sure that we do not miss these opportunities, because there are parts of the county that are, you know, whether it's actual at-home internet that people need, or whether it's cellphone coverage, whether it's the ability to call a first responder from your cellphone or from your home, or from wherever you are, there's so many aspects where broadband comes to play in this, and it's an overarching tool of, and of technology. I think I kind of want to leave it there for now. I may want to fill a gap later, but those are the two sort of examples of where I think that we need to look more comprehensively and bring in, whether it's experts or consultants or, or folks. Thank you very much. And, but I'll leave it for there, Madam Chair. Thank you, and I don't know if people are going to respond right now, or we're going to go down the line, so.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green. So again, in the, in the spirit in which we're approaching this, I'm going to, you know, first ask Stephanie to touch upon customer service, and, you know, provide an update, both in terms of what's been done to date relative to the customer service plans that are being produced pursuant to previous direction by the board, as well as the proposed timeline to wrap up that work for all county departments. I'm going to then briefly touch upon one of the countywide initiatives that are being proposed that relate to accountability and data-driven process, which is to develop key performance indicators for all county departments in consultation with the board, so that you can hold us accountable, and the public can hold us accountable in terms of the performance metrics that we've agreed upon to help measure the impact and success of our work. I'll have Leandro then talk briefly about, you know, broadband opportunities, what we've, you know, already done with the board's support, and, you know, pending opportunity to, you know, potentially further help leverage opportunities. And then finally, I'll ask Alex to talk about the SGMPS-LDC updates, so.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you. I just want to preface by saying that it's at the discretion of the board, so we do have strategies and objectives around customer service and accountability. If you'd like to elevate those to goals, certainly we can do that. So let me just start there. For customer service, as you know, we have our strategy 4.3.7, which we've had for quite a while. We also have modified it this year to match the resolution that came forward, the 2025-067 that directs each director to create a three-year customer service plan. Right now, we are in the pilot stage. We have a department and a division who are working through a template that the Customer Service Task Force has created, to make sure it works, to vet it, and then we will have each department create these three-year plans. Our goal with the template is to receive somewhat standardized information. That way, we can aggregate it and present it in a way that's more digestible to the public and the board, and per the resolution, and now in the strategy as well. There are measures and metrics for accountability built in.
Stephanie, when you refer to the new strategies, can you point us to where in the memo it's at, in terms of the new, the ones proposed here and the numbers here, please? Thank you.
And then, just along those lines, I frequently have constituents talking about, we talk about accessibility and sort of the overlap of customer service there, that our website is not nearly as easy to navigate and to find things. And so that frustration, and, you know, there's, there's a whole industry of user interface, right? User experience, user interface, and I don't know if we need to bring somebody in to look at our website and all of our processes, right? That can be from the county clerk's own website, from the assessor, and that we, as a county, bring those best practices in, and that filter, if we don't have it on, on our own team, but we're hearing it from our community, you know, why does it take so long to do this? Why can't I find this? Can you do this for me? No, you, you know, the liaisons are not allowed to do this for them. It has to come from the, from the constituent. There's, there are those hiccups that need to make it so much easier. It's, it's a sales process, right? It is, how to make, you know, Amazon has figured out how to make you buy something in one click. How can we find a way to make somebody feel like we are responsive within one, or two, or three clicks? The minimum number of clicks to feel like they've gotten a response, and then to have a follow-up to say, we got it, here's a timeline and effective customer service. And so maybe that's in process. This is something that's been a year in process, and we move sometimes slower than we wish, but we would love to see those presentations, so that not only are we saying it is in process, but here's what it's going to look like, and we can then criticize it or compliment it as it, as it needs to be. But thanks for that one aspect.
If I may, the other thing that I discussed with your predecessor is, community service has to be a culture. So it shouldn't be something where, when it comes back to the board. It should be something that's evident at every corner, that when people walk in the building, it's noticed, it's notable that they're welcome in that building. So it's, it's how we do business, it's part of the culture. So I'm hoping that we can start to integrate that into our thought processes, is we are all paid for and in service to those folks who are paying for us. Thank you.
And if I can follow up with that, just, customer service is actually an internal focus before it's an external, right? It is like when fire has to talk to growth management, sorry, I'm not picking on you guys, but, I just saw Chief Black there, so he was smiling, and he deserved to be picked on, so. No, but, but when two people internally, right, it is like, don't pass the buck, don't point fingers, right? Oh, I can't take care of this, go call this person. You can't shift that, you need to all, you know, jump into it and find a way to get to a resolution. It's usually quick, because we've got a great team here, but if people feel like they're getting the runaround, it frustrates everybody here. And so to find a way that the first point of contact, whether it's a liaison, or a department head, or an ombudsman for each division and department, takes every issue and just runs with it and tries to clear it off their desk within 24 hours, 72 hours, a week, three weeks, whatever it is, and you give those expectations to the constituent. Or the internal person here, like, if you have a question across the, across departments, you say, I got it, this is going to take me, based on past experience, 72 hours to get you an answer. Then I know that I can let it sit for 72 hours and get an answer pretty quickly, within that time. Once you get to, you know, 96 hours, then I'm bugging you, saying, is everything okay? Did you forget? And, and so on. So one, an internal thing, two, set expectations, and so people know what to, you know, where we can get with that. Thank you.
Real quick, thank you, Commissioner Green, Chair Bustamante. For everyone in the, in our leadership team here, what's being passed around, we all have our individual priorities. It's integrated in one document, so you could follow along and kind of make your own notes and have your own response and discussion. So I just wanted to do that out of courtesy to my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, we had, addressing the question about broadband and housing affordability, I know is going to come up a number of times in our priorities, and I think as we're addressing those, we won't necessarily have to duplicate, but this is the time for integration, that conversation, I think they said, Leandro. I really didn't expect to facilitate this meeting, so.
No, no, please, that's okay. You know, Chair, I was going to respond, both underscore that, as it relates to internal service agencies, certainly the expectation is that the customer service plans would, you know, be supported by service-level expectations. So I think we're all on the same page relative to the point that, that you made. You know, with regard to an overarching theme of accountability and performance, the, one of the proposed strategies, there are actually two. One is to develop key performance indicators for, you know, all county operations, not just to measure levels of activity, but also measure how we're doing against, you know, benchmarks that are ultimately established, you know, by the board. Stephanie will point out the specific number, but the idea was to, again, pilot the concept and work through what data we would need to collect in those pilot, you know, departments or divisions, to, again, help inform and then develop those key performance indicators. And then relatedly, to also develop a mechanism or process whereby we can keep track of our most significant resource, which is our human resources, so that we can better assess, you know, our bandwidth and our effectiveness, and be able to have a more robust dialogue in future years about what our capacity is relative to different initiatives. So those are two overarching strategies that are being put forward by county management that touch upon the themes that you alluded to, Commissioner Green, which, again, is accountability. It relates to customer service, but it's a different focus in terms of how we can, again, be accountable both to the board and to the public after we've defined how you're going to measure our performance, and that would be, you know, dashboard-facing and public-facing. And so, again, those are overarching strategies. The idea, again, was to, you know, pilot that, similar to what Stephanie is doing in terms of a customer service plan, so that, you know, we can work out, you know, kinks and also make sure that we're working collaboratively with the board in developing what those would look like. Tentatively, we've identified, you know, two departments that would be part of the pilot program. One would be the Growth Management Department, in order to actually develop some data around issues related to time to permit, and also what we expect those, you know, that performance to be, but it could inform, you know, future discussions by the board relative to how you might want to change the permitting or development approval process. But again, it's to provide data-driven insights and also help define what the turnaround time should be. The other department is the Fire Department. You know, Chief Black has volunteered to help work in that effort, to help, again, develop some key performance indicators that could help, you know, drive accountability, both to the board and to the public. So that's what I wanted to mention relative to that topic, and again, those strategies were proposed by county staff. And then Leandro, if you can talk briefly about, again, what we've done previously relative to broadband, and then also, you know, particular proposal relative to leveraging, you know, funds, not to get off track, but to at least answer that question about how we are trying to work to leverage those federal funds. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me? This is an interesting mic, so. So broadband, yes, when I got to the county almost four years ago, we did not have a whole lot of broadband experience as a county, and that had been a priority, something we definitely have put some focus into. We've created a broadband working group of internal stakeholders, so that we're talking about it a lot more, having discussion on the subject. We've been working with OBE, which is the state organization handling the federal We've been working with OBE, which is the state organization handling the federal money that's coming through. We've been able to receive some grants from OBE to do our broadband strategic plan. So that's been great. We worked earlier in the year to work with OBE to see how we might be able to fund partial grant matches for private providers to, to expand their broadband options through Santa Fe County. And that, at that time, we were actually probably ahead of most counties. We were almost probably ahead of OBE because we were ready to provide help and the game kind of changed as we were going along. So that's been the frustrating part with broadband is the federal funds that are in, being charged through OBE have had a lot of starts and stops and changes in how they're going to move them. And there is an opportunity now that we're being, that we've been presented by a vendor that has received an OBE award, and they still need 7.8 million for their cash match. So they were awarded a big amount without the entire cash match. So we're trying to see if there's synergies here at the county to help us provide at least some or whatever that match might be. So we're working across lines with Public Safety to see if the Public Safety Radio Project might have any opportunity to create synergy for this private recipient of a grant that we're here to try to help them find their, their gap because they're obviously in a funding gap of their own. So there's a way we can help them. We're working on that. So that's something the board will see probably before the end of the year. We're just trying to figure out the best path forward to try to offer them something and see what there is that can create a synergy for benefit to the county as well as benefit to the residents of Santa Fe County and then try to keep that money in Santa Fe County. So that's our, our goal. I know that we've learned a lot about broadband from the beginning and we have hired a lot of experts. Some of the consultants we've hired are now working at OBE. So we've been hiring folks that seem to know enough that they're being stolen out from our, to run the state level. So we're continuing to work on our opportunities. There's still more money for more planning. So we're going to take an opportunity to apply for more GWP is the acronym, but to extend our planning efforts past our strategic plan to ways to look at how we would be prepared in the future when readiness gets to a point of a decision. So that's our next option or pursuit of grant money is to see how we would be best prepared in the time that OBE, I mean, that readiness comes to an end. So hope that helps with some of our efforts. I know we have a long way to go, but we're definitely working on every opportunity that presents to itself to us and seeing how we might be able to. It's difficult in a lot of ways because we are not the main funding source. We kind of come down to where we are trying to help fill in gaps and keep that federal money active, but we're, we're not the, the dog or the tail, so.
I just wanted to point out where these were per that request earlier. So these are all in Exhibit A. If you're looking for our customer service initiative, that's 4.3.7. The key performance indicators that Manager Schaefer talked about are Objective 5, Strategy 4.5.1 and 4.5.2. And then our broadband plan is Strategy 2.4.5. We're going to try and put them up on the screen, not that you can really see it, but to help, help direct towards what the staff has brought forward, make sure it's meeting your needs.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And to follow up for, with, with Leandro, you know, one of the things that I think the strategic plan, at least in its draft form, mentioned, and I see this as a best practice of cities and counties around New Mexico, is, is really hiring an internal expert, right? Because the working group was, was a ad hoc solution to us not being able to hire a specific person for, for this. Los Alamos County, City of Albuquerque, lots of, lots of communities have decided that this is a key person that sort of organizes this one effort. It may not be somebody that, you know, builds an entire, you know, 25-year career at Santa Fe County doing broadband, but it is a three to five-year sort of situation where that expertise has been necessary for, you know, Leandro, you said you've been working on this for four years at Santa Fe County, certainly for the three that I've been here. And I would seriously look at potentially bringing somebody on in that position. Our consultants were not really broadband experts. They were, they were really planning experts, as it may be. And so they were, you know, people that understand the technical side and the grant-making side. And all of these things are few and far between, but they are out there. And I would recommend that we bring somebody internal so that we can have project areas that get built out. Maybe we're, maybe we're too little, too late in this, but I think it's still, there's still an opportunity here.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll just go back to saying, it's about culture, not just references to codes and numbers and goals and objectives, but it's about a culture and I really hope that that gets heard, that everybody just gets that this is just a culture of how we do it. And I don't know how we can enumerate that. It's something everybody should know is happening, but onward hope. All right.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. And I think, again, per your request, not to ask you to keep track of what we were discussing to help facilitate the conversation, I'll ask Alex to talk about the SGMP and SLDC as it relates to housing affordability. And, and on the culture front, I'll just make the note that we do completely and wholeheartedly agree, it's a very much front-centered process in our new employee orientation is customer service. It's both something that I talk about personally with folks as well as Stephanie.
It's actionable. With, with all due respect, I think as people walk in the door, when people knock on the door for use, et cetera, they should feel this is a customer-oriented place.
Don't disagree.
So I, I just, it's, it's fine that people are trained up front. It's about executing it on a day-to-day basis. I want to point out something that Commissioner Kokari Stone worked with her staff, her one liaison to do, which I find to be exceptional. And I understand that everyone has this in their hands right now. The districts are the only thing that are incorrect because this is a new person to the county, but this synthesizes everything that was brought in, and this is incredibly helpful. It gives everyone a, you know, the point of where those issues that were submitted, even with mine coming in as late as it did, made it to the table. So I'm really grateful for this. Thank you. Let me just, yes.
Yeah, I think that, no, we want to be aligned as commissioners and be efficient in this process in the two days. And there wasn't an opportunity to do that, so, and then one of them came in last night. But I think you can see, we are have some key synergistic priorities. And if, as commissioners, if we're still going around, it gives, I wanted to also respect all of you so you can see where these opportunities and what you've identified as priorities as well. But I want to clarify, with Stephanie's leadership, we were asked to do big picture and not drill down. And so that's why we're, you don't see a lot of details. And I, I just want to be sure that folks know that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead. You were asking for Alexandra.
Go ahead, Alexandra.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Good morning. I don't know what that says about my department that I'm speaking first. But I do, I created, well, let me talk a little bit about process. I think in the next few years, Growth Management has four pretty significant projects. And I will pass this timeline out for you all to take with you. But the very first, and this was initiated before I arrived here, which is making some technical revisions to the existing Sustainable Land Development Code so that priorities of affordable housing, sustainability, and the affordability of development can be addressed sooner than later. We have made progress in that. We do have a project manager consultant onboard. We've got three steering committees based on staff and the affordability, the affordable housing piece, so that's Chapter 13 of the code, will be moving forward within six months for your review and consideration. The second project that's also moving forward in a parallel world is our Public Participation Plan for the Sustainable Growth Management Plan Update. So this will be a fairly extensive effort to do two things. There's a difference between outreach and engagement. So outreach is getting the information out to the community and having them feel like it's important to be involved. And engagement is the actual involvement of the community. So this plan will come before, before you, by February of 2026. You'll be seeing this shortly. So that's pretty exciting. And then, once we have the Public Participation Plan in place, we will begin the actual planning process to update the Sustainable Growth Management Plan. This will really look at revisiting the values that are currently articulated in the plan, seeing where things have changed, where things have doubled down, where we need to do better, where we maybe don't need to do it that way anymore. So we'll, we'll begin that process. At the end of that process, then we will revisit the Sustainable Land Development Code and ensure that the code, which is really, the regulation is really the implementation tool for the policy, which is articulated in the plan. So the regulation, the code, we'll revisit it and see, wow, have community values changed to the extent that we really need to revise maybe more major sections of the code at that point in time. And that would happen in, we would have that completed by the end of, or the middle of 2029. So this is like a, it's not really linear phases. They're sort of overlapping and they're parallel and they are also linear. So that's why perhaps, that's why I wrote it all down and I'll provide this with, with all of you. So that's the piece. Greg, did you want me to touch on, there's so much I could talk about. Do you want me to keep going or should we wait for more specific items to come up?
You know, I would defer to the board. I think that that addresses the high-level overview of what you're already working on as well as a bigger picture item in terms of how some of these larger items can be addressed as part of the strategic, excuse me, as part of the Sustainable Growth Management Plan Update. I know that there was a theme relative to regional, you know, planning, which I think we'll come back to as it comes up in further conversation. So if you can be prepared for that, Alex. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Those are, that's great. I'm appreciating these two aspects. I think that it's sort of overdue and it was thrown at you when you started, so thanks for digging into this. I ask, on the SLDC revision and that, it's great to have experts brought in, they may be from the outside, I don't know who they are specifically. Have you started to bring in user groups, whether it's the architects or the home builders? I know that at the city, they've got a technical working group to help with the Chapter 14 rewrites. Have we established anything like that for, with the folks that use the code more than anybody else, right? You know, if you use the code once because you're a homeowner and you're just using it once, that's sort of not the right, you know, we need to make it simple for the people that use it over and over and over again and who know the best practices from other communities and can bring that and make it easier for the individual homeowner.
Commissioner Green, thanks for that question. That is exactly the place we're going to start. We're calling them our user groups. And they will reflect a wide variety of those industries, including the community organizations and the registered organizations. So we can kind of get a little granular in terms of specific areas of the county as well. I think the, the, the regional aspect of that is the, I'm on the city's technical working group for, for their code update. And so we've, we've talked about having a reciprocal process as well. You know, I think this first round of these revisions is really focused on, on technical kind of details that probably a lot of people don't even realize are things. But as we've implemented this code over 10 years and we realize, wow, if that one sentence was a little bit clearer, it'd be so much easier to interpret and we could be much more consistent with how that rule is applied. So, so it's going to be a lot more of that kind of stuff. And you had a second part to that question, which I'm forgetting.
The user, user groups, that was the first one, but I'll go on to the second part, which was on the SGMP. And really, you know, one, this seems to be that we're, both of these, these initiatives tie into our documents, but to also dovetail with the city's general plan updates and Chapter 14. And so I look for our SGMP, our quote-unquote general plan, to really look at it in collaboration with the city. Because most of our growth, especially with our strategic growth areas, are city-based, right? You know, they do all their shopping in the city, their, their bedroom communities for, for people that work in the city. Most of the schools are in the city. It is a city-dependent growth area. And while it's in the county, you know, we control that, that. And so I would hope that in part of what we start planning, especially with the new administration at the city, that maybe potentially, and I brought this up a few times, to have a collaborative meeting, not Board of County Commissioners and City Council, which I agree with too, but specifically with our Growth Management and Planning Commission, County, with the Land Use Department and Planning Commission of the city, and that we have a joint meeting to talk about these two initiatives and how they can collaborate and overlap so that we're not like looking at each other's work product at the end and going, did you ask? You know, this really looks like you weren't working together. I think there's a great opportunity, because these are happening literally at the same time, to have maybe more than one, right? Really, in the first quarter of 2026, we should have a joint meeting of planning commissions and bring it forward to, if you could, to the Chair of the Planning Commission and to the County Planning Commission to say, would you be willing to? And provide support to them. It's mostly for information for them to ask questions and it's your presentation to them and to the city's planning commission. And then you work with Heather over at the city to do the same thing with her planning commission and to bring it over to, to us, hosted here. It'd be great information for both groups to sort of see that and have fresh eyes and understand how we can work together on that.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, I think that's a great idea. And you probably read Herbert Foster's mind when you were saying that because he's already been going down that, that road to, to bring together those minds. Because I think a really important point is water, traffic, jobs, housing needs, none of that cares about a jurisdictional line, right? And so we really do need to think about these things in terms of the, the area, the watershed, the, the region.
And then as a last little sort of, this is an organization that has been defunct for well over a decade right now, but I think it has a role to play. And we have something similar that focuses on transportation, which is the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. But once upon a time, we used to have the RPA, the Regional Planning Authority. And I think this is a great time to start to investigate if there is an organization that could be built of city and county land use experts so that we're continuously, not just starting with a once a decade meeting between the two planning commissions, or it's never happened before, so, but that we have an organization that has the folks and the expertise, folks from the, re-establishing the RPA would be my recommendation in that. Because, you know, then, then those, you know, annexation fights don't happen, then those collaborative things about economic, all the different aspects of land use can be in one place and heard in a collaborative place. I would, if I were going to re-establish it, I would have it, not only have people from, members from the BCC and the City Council, but have a member from the BCC, a member from the City Council, a member from the city's planning commission, a member from the county's planning commission, and then some other outside expertise. So it's, you know, it's a very collaborative inside-outside two organizations, multi-level. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Just to follow up on that, thank you. And thanks, Commissioner Green, to, to Growth Management. Thank you for the timeline, Alex. The, I want to underscore what Commissioner Green just said. I think it's really important. It's really, I'm glad to hear that you are on the Technical Advisory Committee for the city's land use update code project. And provided that they come to conclusions that we think are smart and correct, you know, I think that you, you gave a timeline for revisions to the SLDC vis-à-vis affordable housing within six months. I think that, or I would hope to see, you know, there could be an opportunity for adjustments to the SLDC when the city has, has landed on some, you know, major conclusions and lessons that we learned there could be corrected in our code in. code in a little bit more piecemeal way. I know that's not how we like to update codes all the time, but some of those alignments may really streamline processes. As you just mentioned, jurisdictional boundaries, right? Don't matter when we're talking about, you know, transit or water, et cetera, et cetera. So I want to underscore that. I think the Regional Planning Board, RBA, RBO, what'd you call it, Green? It doesn't matter.
The name was the Regional Planning Authority, RPA.
Authority, got it. Okay. I think, I think thinking about restarting that is, is perhaps a good idea, maybe even in just in initial capacity. And I think we have a new opportunity at the city. So there are, it, it seems like this, you know, we, 2029, which I think is what you said for the SGMP, I, I would love to see slight revisions to the SLDC in the, you know, in the next year, that, that sort of align with the priorities that we've given here. And you already mentioned affordable housing. So, and it sounds like you have more. Thank you.
Well, let me follow up on affordable housing. I think that's great. I think we want to hold you to six months. We're going to hear the revisions to the Growth Management Plan, because I think that's very important for us to pursue. A lot of my goals are very specific and I wonder if, I think it might be useful to update the commission on where we are in developing permanent supportive housing as a small piece of affordable housing. We produce, we're planning to produce perhaps 40 units for people who are most in need of housing, coming out of jail or homeless. Looks like we have to apply for tax credits in order to afford that. And I'd like the staff to just bring us up to date. So all the commissioners, Commissioner Kukai Stone and I are involved, so we know all about it, I think, but the other three need to be brought up to date.
So relative to the feasibility study for permanent supportive housing, I'll ask Ann Ryan, or a member of her team, to provide an update, again, from the Community Services Department. Thanks, Ann.
Madam Chair, Chair Bustamante, thanks so much for the opportunity. So we recently, probably within the last three months, applied for a grant through the S3 Group to do a feasibility study for permanent supportive housing, trauma-informed, here within the city or the county. We contracted with Project Moxy and we've been meeting with them on a regular basis to determine feasibility. They should have that report ready for BCC presentation at some point, likely by the end of this calendar year. Currently, two sites appear potentially feasible, resources permitting, and depending upon design model methodology, and looking at two demographics in particular. One would be the quote AOT demographic, assisted outpatient treatment for those predominantly kind of rotating between and among the jail, Chris's and Pete's place, or looking at seniors. And you all had the opportunity to listen to the results of the recent senior survey and we know the trend in that demographic. So looking at those two demographics, looking at two sites in particular, and how the supportive piece would be built, would be a big part of that. So I think the last thing that I'm going to say as it relates to city-county partnerships, that the city has made it very, very clear, they have taken a certain path as it relates to housing. And so they really want to focus on and are focusing on emergency placement short-term and holding certain vendors accountable for that. But then what, right? If there's not affordable housing or if there's not supportive housing, how is that provider supposed to meet that metric? And so we really do see this as a great complement to that particular approach.
Yeah, I think it's important to realize that the city's focusing on the emergency response, but we're not going to create the end response, the actual permanent housing for people. Because, of course, I've worked in homelessness many years and I noticed people are homeless until they have secure housing and then they change their lives for the better. And so we're going to create permanent supportive housing. And primarily, you mentioned two demographics, but the overarching demographic is these are disabled people, not people who are able to work.
I just, I just want to add to that first. Thank you so much, Commissioner Hughes, for including me on this since January and the team has been terrific. The housing, bringing the housing expertise with the county, with community services, I think is a phenomenal step forward in terms of more integrated holistic approaches. I also want to mention that Commissioner Green and I started meeting with several, three city councilors and we were going to have a joint meeting of he and I, city councilors, and the community services, and the housing team. And we're calling it a crossover initiative. And we'll be first doing a crosswalk of emergency housing to short-term housing, like the pallets, and the long-term supportive housing, what's in the works, what's available, but to also look at gaps and what we can start thinking about long-term. And we're going to be initiating what we call an action lab on housing rather than a study group. So I think that's super, super exciting.
So, one of the aspects where this comes in, that maybe our expertise can come in help, you know, permanent supportive housing, for the most part, my guess, is going to happen in the city, even if it's a county project. So it's subject to city codes, right? It's not our codes. And so while our experts can come up with code adjustments to the SLDC, it's really going to be code adjustments to Chapter 14 and to the city's code to make a model of permanent supportive housing much more viable. And so what does that mean? That means that, or an example of that. In communities like big cities that have, that have addressed this, it's called an SRO, single room occupancy. It's not even a studio apartment. Studio apartment technically has to have a full kitchen, has to have a lot of amenities. But in the true affordability of a unit, especially for this vulnerable community, you just need a basic private space, closet, bathroom, bedroom, workspace. You don't need a full, you know, cost of $20,000 to $50,000 for a kitchen, you know, their community, it's a communal living sort of situation, at least for the kitchens. You can have a hot plate and you can have a microwave, you can have those things in your unit. But a full-on kitchen is what qualifies a, a unit in city speak for the code. And I think that we need to go help the city understand the viability and the, the place that an SRO fits in the permanent supportive housing landscape, in the housing landscape, and the solutions for the permanent supportive housing. So I don't know if we can help them understand that this is part and a priority, especially when they're looking at a, a big emergency shelter and maybe not looking at supportive housing as a model there. So this is another place where collaboration comes in and maybe we can help them see the light.
I think, you know, where we have our expert looking at it, she's going to, I think she's going to give us the best practice, which may be full apartments for this project. But SROs are necessary for some people. Other people require more privacy, I think, than that.
Do you have more?
I have more. Okay. Let's move on to a very minor one, which is road adoption policy. We're working on that too, but can we address how we're coming along on that, either Manager Schaefer or whoever?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioner Hughes. I'll ask Brian to, you know, provide an update on that, as well as a proposed, you know, timeline, which could certainly be included within the strategic plan, though it has a pretty tight turnaround time. Go ahead, Brian.
Chair Bustamante and Commissioner Hughes, thank you for the question. We are, I mean, we've been met, we've met with you and your constituents on road adoption a couple of times. And we are prepared to bring forward either a late December, second meeting in December, or first meeting in January, a presentation on the resolution as it stands now, identifying the framework as it exists now, opportunities as have been discussed with the community and yourself, and potential changes to the amendment for commission to opine on and give feedback on. And then in a meeting, subsequent meeting, we will come back forward with a action item for commission to take. We're using the model that we used with the community centers several months ago, where we got, we felt the process worked, where we give a presentation, solicited good feedback, incorporated that feedback into the resolution update, and they came back for action items. So we're going to be using that model, realizing that we had a lot of conversation outside of that process. But timeline-wise, I would expect us to be back before you, early January. And then I would say, I think using the community center as a model, resolution as a model, two to three meetings thereafter, we will come back in front of adoption of a, a resolution update.
Thank you. Yeah. I mean, the, the history of this is, in 2021, I think we passed the current road adoption policy, which was very, very strict. Prior to that, it was a little too political and, you know, in fact, you know, subject to misuse, I guess. And so we're trying to come to a, a good point in the middle where we, we can adopt roads, not make it too easy, but, you know, make it possible. And I, of course, I use Spur Ranch Road as an example, because it, it needs to be adopted. So, thank you for that.
Thanks. I just want to follow up on that. I'm going to throw in like a, a bigger picture, long-term thinking on this. And I appreciate Commissioner Hughes, your advocacy for this. I, I have requests from constituents all the time about information for the road adoption policies. And often they look at it and say, you know, not worth it. What I want us to think about as a county, as leaders, as staff, as experts who work on these sorts of things, you know, we are a rural county, a big county with lots of roads that are private and they're poorly maintained and that is, you know, not, it's not on the county. But how can the county, in the next, you know, 10 years, 15 years, figure out a way to, not necessarily take on the burden of all of those roads, but I don't know, develop some sort of relationship with property owners or, you know, maybe ordinances for maintenance or something like that? Because we are seeing, especially, you know, the mountainous region to the east, where wildfire is, is really, really a threat. We have lots of roads, windy, twisty, up narrow, you know, canyons that are barely one lane. And they're extreme fire hazards and extreme hazards to, to life. So, you know, I know that we don't have the answer today, but I, I wonder if there are ways that the county is thinking about how we can make sure that in the case of wildfire, those roads are actually adequate for fire vehicles to go, you know, up and down. Their, you know, ingress egress is acceptable for people leaving, people coming to fight the fire or save lives. So I just, I'm using the opportunity for the road adoption policy to, to sort of plant a seed about this kind of thing. I'm sure that experts on our team are thinking about it, but if there are updates to, in that regard, I would love to hear them. Thank you.
Thanks. And to both of those points, you know, one of the things that, you know, we as a county have tools that can sort of, they may not be tools that everybody likes how they work, but they solve the problem, right? So Spur Ranch Road is an example, has a complicated road management agreement, certain people are involved, certain people are not involved and contributing. But we have taxing authority and create, can create a district that mandates that everybody comes into it. And the folks that are already contributing to the road maintenance, they're already contributing. So maybe that rolls into it. And it's just forcing the folks that are not necessarily a part of that into it. And that's just using Spur Ranch as an example. That may not be the perfect example. But that's an example of certain things that if they really want this, and we can propose something that nobody wants a bigger tax bill, but it's, everybody wants a perfect road. So, so there's at least a direct correlation to your taxes are going to go up, but it's going to go to your road. And this is how we do it. And this is something that they can't necessarily do, but we could through different, you know, condemnation or different, different tools that counties have that they don't have. And then the same sort of tools that I think to Commissioner Johnson's point, for, for roads that might have access issues, that might not be wide enough, but have fire, egress, and safety issues, that we start to look at those roads in a way that, that we say, we're going to help clean up some of the, some of the issues on these roads. It's not wide enough. Well, here, this is the solution to look at a road adoption in a secondary way, like maybe it's not to the full level that we would want, but at least solves the access issue so that we can get emergency vehicles in there and we can get it to be a safe, a safe road. And that we have maybe tiers of roads, that when something is a big, major road that we adopt, it has a certain standard. But then we have a minor road standard that we can do that says, and at least solves the access and maintenance, but it's definitely not at the, whatever, 24-foot or whatever those big issues are there. But there's all sorts of roads here and it shouldn't just be a one-size-fits-all aspect.
Well, one, one idea we had that may not do tax districts, but we could pass a resolution or something similar to what's in Pennsylvania, I think, that says, everybody who lives on a private road has to contribute. And we can make that just a rule, you know, rather than, there's so many private roads in this, in the county, I don't think we can create a tax district for every one. That would be a lot of work.
If they wanted to, right? If you want to fix a road.
Well, everybody wants to fix their road. And everybody has the problem of, some people contribute, some people just bought an SUV and don't bother, you know. So it's, and I, I think it's a bigger problem than we can solve altogether. There's so many private roads, we can, but we'll take on some anyway.
I think this is great discussion and impacts all of our districts. And I know with the expertise of Brian and his team, that they'll be able to look at models with other counties and some cost efficiencies. And maybe we could look at that as a BCC when that's ready. Thank you.
I guess my, my third priority is sustainability. I just wondered if we could have an update on where we are toward meeting the 2030 Paris Goals, or something like that. I just, I always am curious where we're at. I mean, I think it's in the process.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hughes, Jonathan stepped out for, I mean, but he'd be the one to answer that, I believe that.
Is the road adoption policy in the strategic plan?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Hughes, it is not, but we will add it with the timeline that was discussed.
Okay, great, great. I mean, it may be done pretty quick. Thank you. Well, does somebody else have sustainability? We can get to it.
I do, for sure.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I think we do.
Yeah, so we'll move on and come to sustainability again.
Okay, then let's take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 20 minutes, I mean, 25 minutes till, at 10:35.
So Jonathan's here. Do we want to go on to sustainability?
Yeah, let's do your last one.
Yeah.
So my last one was an update on where we are in sustainability, just our progress toward meeting the Paris Goal of 2030.
I think let's get everybody to the, I was trying to knock the gavel. The meeting's back in order. All right. We're going to continue with Commissioner Hughes's final priority with sustainability and the 2030 goal.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Hughes. Thank you for the question. I will, I will say, we have a lot of data points for our sustainability goals, which is really good. It's one of the divisions that we can actually get real qualitative data around, that we have been updating on our dashboard system. And it may be helpful if we go through some of those things, then kind of one by one, just on where we are in terms of project completion, on some of those strategies. The Sustainability Division, we've got, Stephanie has queued up a slide deck for us that I prepared a few days ago. The one thing about the Sustainability's Division is they are one of the divisions that I am recommending that we largely just stay the course, with one exception. At you all's last meeting, you asked for the feasibility regarding public utilities, and we are tasking our sustainability team with leading that process. So that would be the one modification. I would say, based on what we've talked about, if I were synthesizing those strategies and the objectives associated with it, we really do just continue, want to continue to focus on increasing our adaptation and response to climate change, protecting conserve water resources. And then I'll go specifically into the strategies, if you don't mind, and kind of give you an update on where we are in the progress. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely, especially in terms of energy. I think, you know, using renewable energy would be important.
So if I'm going to point you to Objective 2.2, we have recommended some language change when it comes to how we are talking about some of our objectives that relate specifically both to community development, and then with regards to the Sustainability Division's main function. So if we talk to Objective 2.2, we are looking to mitigate Santa Fe County's contribution to climate change and increase equitable adaption in response through active implementation of the countywide climate action plan. If you go to Strategy 2.2.1, we have by June of 2026, create and implement an EV and electric equipment fleet policy based on the 24 and 25 EV transition plan. To date, we are currently about 80% complete in that work, and we expect to be at about 100% in the beginning of the next year. If we go to the strategy of 2.2.2, evaluate funding opportunities to support strategies through federal, state, and other partners on climate programs, and submit a minimum of two grand applications that are consistent with the objectives of Santa Fe County. We have definitely done that. We've secured grants for CFI, we have secured grants within the seed domain, we are in a process, in a NIPA process. Jacquelene also indicated to me yesterday that we are likely to receive another grant. So we are definitely moving as far as that work is concerned. The next strategy, ensuring the protection and enhancement of pollinator species, we recommended that this action item be discontinued. That was in your former strategy. And so we have reframed Strategy 2.2.3 to say by 2030, ensure that 60% of county-owned buildings are upgraded with electrification, energy efficiency, and water conservation improvements, with annual monitoring and energy and water savings. We are about 60% on that goal. We have been working diligently with our Public Works team. We also included as a larger line item goal that I think is noteworthy for you. We've talked at great length about the intersections of our work, both within the context of community development and all of the entities that fall within, in the domain of community development, but particularly with Public Works and Growth Management. We know we have a great working relationship, myself, Brian, and Alex, and I have that great working relationship with their teams as well. What we don't have is as effective coordination as is possible to ensure that we can continue to advance these goals, strategies, and initiatives in even a more productive way. I'm going to give you a couple examples, if you don't mind, for how that plays out in real time, and how it contributes to us meeting these specific goals. We are in the process of doing analysis and evaluation even of this building, to see if there are energy efficiency gains that can also pass the standards of historic preservation. In order to do that, we have to work diligently with the team from Public Works, we have to work with Valerie and her team with risk management, we have to work with the county manager's office, we have to coordinate with emergency management, we have to coordinate with emergency response personnels in order to do that type of activity. I'm using this as just one example for how many of the things that we're working on, particularly out of sustainability, have to involve so many more people, not only throughout the county, but then as we interact with residents, as we engage with community members, how can we be more effective in being able to do that together? And how can we be more seamless in some of these processes? And so we've had some bumps, I'm going to be honest with you, even in terms of thinking about this building and whether or not we have communicated effectively with contractors, our team, Public Works, the CMO's office, and risk management, to do all of the data analysis that is necessary to be able to just get into an application. But what we have committed to in one of the other strategies, it is, I think, by number 2.14, is increased coordination with Public Works and Growth Management, that will take place in quarterly convenings and meetings with one another, so that we know we're on the same page. We can't do the EV work, we can't do the energy efficiency work with buildings, we can't do rain gardens in their facilities, or think through our facilities in that way, without this increased coordination. So I just want to say that to you all, this is an emphasis. We think it goes to what you all have already emphasized. We think it goes to what you all have already emphasized with regards to customer service, thinking about that internal customer, Chair Bustamante and Commissioner Green, when we think about how we do that work. And so in order to commit to these goals and do this work, even though it's on Sustainability's line, Sustainability can't work in a silo and a vacuum to be able to complete it. I'm sorry for going out on that sort of tangent. But I do want to say then that without Brian's team, we can't go out and do the work around the EV stations or the buildings or any of those types of things. To get back to my point, 60% of our facilities and operations to be achieved by 2030, and we're about 60% on that metric. Measured by greenhouse gas inventory every five years, we need to work through looking at updates to the land development code, as we have already talked about that, and working in conjunction with our team in order to be able to meet some of those goals. And so I would say, as far as that movement is concerned on that goal, we are also about 60% of the way there in implementing the strategies to be able to do that. I'll just quickly kind of go through, one more for you, Commissioner Hughes, to make sure that I'm also judicious with you all's time in thinking through where we are in accordance with the Paris Agreement in 2015 to increase renewables, energy access, and usage by 60% throughout the county. To date, we are still coming online and not expected to deploy completely until '26. And so we're looking at a time period of about '26 through '28. We are engaged currently on initiatives involving community solar. We are also thinking about our relationship and anchor tenancy. And so we are evaluating some of that, that activity as we speak to increase not only the credits that we're able to get as a county, but we've also working with providers to ensure that we are connecting particularly lower-income households to any of the savings that may be generated from some of this activity. That's an intentional thing that we've been working with providers to be able to ensure. And so we are progressing and, and moving that goal. And give me one second. We think that through some of these interventions and through some of the added work with PNM, we're moving towards a goal of being able to have a lot more information. From '26 to '28, we'll see sort of the most significant benefits of that, that work.
Yeah, sounds good. I'm particularly interested in whether we're converting any gas-heated buildings to electric. That seems like the hardest thing for us to do. And, you know, so, but, you know, eventually it has to be done. I mean, to eliminate renewable carbon footprint.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hughes, yes, we are. Anytime we have the opportunity to transition a building, if we're doing a renovation there, Benny J., Abaddon Lopez come to mind. Anytime we have the opportunity to go from a gas or propane, especially in some of the remote areas, we have propane, because gas is not, natural gas is not available, we are making the switch to electrifying the building.
So which, which building is that you're working on now?
I believe Benny J., we just finished up as an example of, of that. But any building that we go into, we have, I can get you a list offline or get the Commissioner a list offline of buildings within the last year that we've put a focus on, on renovating and swapping out systems.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm Jonathan, and Brian, thank you for that. I'm wondering specifically, is this CFI grant, we got that almost a year and a half ago at this point, and I would hope that we'd have some chargers being built. Is there an estimated time to see when we're going to get some of those deployed? I've heard that there's a threat of federal clawback and so we need to get that money in place for those, yeah, projects built.
We are almost complete with that goal. To date, we have installed about 31. And so we are moving forward and progressing with that.
That's with the, the charger grant, the 4. something million dollars? We've actually built some of those?
What's the last thing you said, Commissioner?
We've actually built some of those?
Yes, yes, those are in the process. And we do have additional contract work out for additional movement on those. But yes, we have moved that work.
That's amazing. We should have either ribbon cuttings or whatever you do with an electric charger and plug in your vehicle and watch the meter go. The fleet-
And we can, I think what we can do is also make sure that we give a more robust update on those activities. We'd love to come back and present into a formal presentation to the Commission on, on that work and those updates in association, not just with sustainability, but I think for us and for me being new. I haven't done that with you all as we've walked through some of what the work is within the department.
Great. And then, you know, as much as this is a historic building, and I would love to see solar panels on top of this, maybe not, right? Maybe this is the inappropriate spot for it. And so whatever that carbon footprint is or electrical footprint is that we would like to generate on-site, maybe that's just inappropriate. And so maybe the easiest thing is to just call PNM and say, "How can we buy 100% renewable for whatever our energy load on this building is and be done with it?" Right? And not go through the headache of all of the panels on the building, people griping about having, you know, the historic status of this building, you know. There are off-site solutions to this that we could actually do that might just be easier than, you know, trying to put a bunch of panels on top of the building or in the parking lot. And then, you know, I, I like the sustainability under community development for one aspect, but I also like the idea of creating sustainability as a filter for all things, right? I mean, it's, you know, it might bring you to the table everywhere, whether it's at Public Works or Growth Management or FIRE or IT, you name it. Like everything, you know, Jacquelene might be spread pretty thin and might need some added capacity. But there's a concept of, just like we moved emergency management out of the FIRE department because it wasn't just a FIRE issue, it's a whole bunch of things, and it lives under the county manager's office. I'm wondering if there's a thought about putting a sustainability officer in the county manager's office so that they sit at every table every time something comes through, whether it's FIRE, whether it's, you know, whether it's IT, whether it's, you know, community development, whether it's Growth Management, and then it becomes a singular person that projects might be project-based over, you know, when they're capital, over at Public Works. And when they're strategies, they might be a community development. And when they're code development, but that this person has a sort of filter for that. And not to take something away from you, but to sort of give it a broader impact and cross-organizational focus.
Well, you've actually, you're speaking my language in this way. You stepped into my main approach to thinking, both from a sort of intersectional approach to doing the work, both as an equity professional, and what I'm attempting to do within the course of the division as it now stands is making that pivot. Right now, the way we are structured, we are very, go get a grant, try to execute the grant, but in order to execute the grant, it takes reliance on other folks within the organization in order to be able to do that. And it takes a lot of coordination. What I'd love to see our team become is policy-driven and execution-based as far it is in connectivity with other departments and other divisions and how they move through their work. Much like I'm approaching problem-solving often wearing a diversity, equity, and inclusion lens, and although in some areas of the world and country, those are not favored language, right? But what I will say to you, the thought process is, is how do we integrate that type of work in everything that we're doing, right? And so I will say this, I'm affirming your thought process. And I'm also saying that is my intentions as a department leader to be able to move them within the context of this division in that direction. And so that's where we're headed. Jacquelene and her team do a fantastic job with very, very limited personnel. But if we think about just my observations as a newcomer coming in and looking at the strategic plan as it was designed, when I look at the whole department and the overlay for all of the strategies, it was a lot of things underneath sustainability. And they are all important and necessary. But I also think that group needs to be nimble in being able to work more seamlessly across the spectrum. I think you give me a little time, we'll have more data and input on how we're able to do that. But I think we can do that and keep it the way it is within the same division and same departmental structure and still meet the goals that you are thinking through.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I really just don't understand why it is not in Public Works. It, it's absolutely, it's anti, it's not logical in what that role is. And I don't know of any other entity that does that, that it isn't working directly with either the utility or an entity. But that's just for, no, thanks. But we can find that out in a bit because I'd like us to keep moving through this. We do have a hard stop at one, which, not trying to rush anyone because we want to give this all the time, but it does raise the question, and I don't believe it'll be answered quickly right now because clearly there was a thoughtful decision that was made to do that. So my top priorities, and I did keep these at some macro level, is protection of agricultural lands. We've been working with the TDR. It is not, the TDR was brought to the county, I think it was birthed in the mid-1990s. And the two individuals who worked on it are no longer with the county, but we haven't successfully, and it was never with the intent to have a way developers, excuse me, developers would be able to buy more density. It was never with that focus. It was literally at the time of its earliest discussions to provide ways for agricultural people to keep their agricultural land in production and not lose their shirts. And I go back to a constituent who literally pointed in my face and said, "You tell me how to grow my crops again and stop growing trailers." And that was literally what was said to me. So we have thus far not been able to carry off a TDR measure and in my, in the documents that we've provided, but how or what we do to assure that our irrigable lands are available and capable of growing foods is important at some point. And I think now is as good as any. So that is my first priority. And I don't know if there is something we want to say to adjust what the county's going to do in the absence of being successful in a TDR program.
Chair Bustamante, thank you. I'll ask Alexandra Ladd to provide an update relative to work that is ongoing and should be brought to the board within the next one to two months, specific to the TDR program and, you know, at which we present some options to the board, you know, to, to consider, relative to other strategies that, you know, the board may ultimately want to consider. I think that's also part of that conversation and can look to strategies that are outlined in the Sustainable Growth Management Plan at this point in time. But Alex, if you can talk about the TDR work with the consultants as well as with our, your focus groups, as well as, you know, what other strategies, again, have already been identified in the Growth Management Plan as alternatives to the TDR program, you know, should that in fact prove to be non-viable?
Thank you for the question, Chair Bustamante and Manager Schaefer. I appreciate that. So we have a staff person who has gone through the code and all of the past documents produced for the transfer of development rights, just to dispel the acronym, we tend to use those too much in government, right? For anyone listening who doesn't know what a TDR is. And he has systematically created a user's guide for TDRs because I think we've, I, I think we haven't known what TDRs are. And I think everyone has their own idea of what they're supposed to do and the language is written to be pretty expansive. It's a pretty big bucket. So I'm glad you're bringing it up because I think that it is time for the board to, once you hear from the TDR consultant who will be presenting, hopefully by the end of the calendar year, but if not, first thing in January. And this is a consultant who's worked with TDR programs all around the country. So there's a little bit of a best practices lens, but also providing some, has done a bunch of analysis of the market. Because the way we've designed the TDR program was at its market base. So, you know, there's no shortage of supply of beautiful lands to preserve in Santa Fe County. But we need the, the demand, we need the, the market to want, to, to have a, for that to have value for, for the market. And so that's, that's the part that's a little bit confusing. And I think our market up to this point has, has sort of shied away because it seems a little scary and nobody really knows what it's all about. So, you know, we are solving those perception issues shortly and really kind of nailing down where, what are the gaps to make this a market-based program? It is up to the board to decide, maybe we don't want it to be a market-based program. Maybe we want it to incentivize this kind of protection and land use. That's a different program and that requires budget and requires a lot of other things. So, so those are bigger decisions down the road. But I do think within a month or two, we'll have some much better data and analysis for, for all of you to think about.
Thank you Alexandra. So clearly, the market base does not meet its initial intent when it was discussed in the 1990s. It was very specifically, and I've, you know, discussed this with the two who have left, it was initially done to protect the agricultural lands. It was part of a community planning process that the county was doing with a number of communities. I just happened to be in the planning group of La Cienega that has people who want to keep agricultural lands agricultural. It was a promise that I made, and I do believe, and I frankly, as a public health person with a background in knowing what healthy food is, and I don't think I have to have that credential to know that locally grown food is healthier for people because it's not ripening on a truck. We want to make sure that we have healthier food grown locally, not just lettuces. There are a lot of things we can think about. Plus, it keeps the land in production and it's good for the aquifer. So that being said, agricultural, other strategies, Greg, that you mentioned?
Thank you Chair Bustamante. I'll defer to Alex, I didn't have a chance to read the agricultural element of the Sustainable Growth Management Plan. But I do think the one that Alex was alluding to is that, you know, if a market-based system isn't in fact viable, the board could pivot to a conservation easement program, which, you know, gets to a similar end result through a different means. That is one that comes to mind. And of course, you know, the zoning relative to agricultural land, you know, also plays a role in that by zoning it appropriately, which I think in many areas of the county that is done, but Alex can speak to that, you alleviate development pressure because the zoning doesn't, you know, support it. So I think, you know, that's another macro level tool. And if there's any others that Alex want to, to add. But I think relative to actual preservation, again, I think a non-market-based program would look like a conservation easement program.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just add one-
Madam Chair, if I could just add one thing to that point, the protecting lands from development, I think that becomes sort of a one-way street if we don't, and, and the idea behind the TDRs is then you, you, you do densify the areas that can handle the density, right? So that's where the infrastructure is, where the roads are, where the schools are, where the trails are, where the train stations are. And that's, you know, I think that's a really unique approach that the county's taken, which is that it is this tangible, physical element to growth, which I think is really helpful and makes sense even to somebody who's not a planner, like I am. So I guess I would, I would just caution, we don't kind of want to throw away the idea that, that we do want development. We, you know, the presentation I did the other day at the Water Summit, we know we have a shortage of housing units. We know that for our communities to, for our community to stay viable, we need a place where people who work here can, can afford to live, and where they can have good schools to send their kids, and where they can take their bikes on a nice bike ride and feel safe. So, so those are all parts of development, like development can actually improve a landscape when it's done right, and when it's done in a way that serves the human experience as well.
I don't think that this is out of line with saying agricultural lands versus housing, though that will be the case if we don't protect the agricultural lands. So this isn't about taking away the density opportunities, it's about assuring that future generations have the ability to grow food where they are. So, that's, that's, that's the priority without saying, because if we have density where there is an ability to grow food, and this goes back to a 14th century law of the Indies, building where you can grow food isn't smart. And yes, we can wait for the trucks to come in, but we don't know what the future holds. And quite frankly, locally grown food is healthier. So, that is, that is a priority, and it's good for you. The next one that I have is-
Wait a minute, we had comments.
A comment?
Yeah, just supportive. I think, yeah, I think we ought to look at the balance between what we can densify with TDRs and how many TDRs we can buy, because I think we'll need to buy them ahead of time before, you know, it's not, it seems that developers and farmers aren't in line with, the farmers want to sell right now, the developers may buy later. And so, we ought to line that up and figure out how much density we can handle, so we know how many TDRs to buy, if we're going to use that as a, as our strategy for protecting at least some of the agricultural land. We couldn't buy it on all the agricultural land, because that would be too much. But I do think we ought to spend a little money ahead of time to start the process. Thank you. And Commissioner Green?
I too want to support the TDR program specifically for agricultural land. I think that that is, especially in my district, one of the big pressures. And then when we look at the growth area, number one, we sort of gave them that area enough rights that they don't need the TDRs. And so, that pressure has been alleviated, so it undercut the market-based situation there. And so, before we go and add density to anywhere, we should be trying to help jumpstart the TDR program by either establishing a bank, or creating a hybrid system that is partially market-based and partially conservation easement, and, you know, different tiers of different things. There might, should be, maybe. Agricultural land is one criteria, which to me would be the highest and best use of preservation. But then there are ridge tops and other areas that are inappropriate for development, but that, and should be, should be preserved as well, but might not rise to the level of preservation need as agricultural land. And then there's wildlife, you know, migration routes and things like that, that's another criteria. But there should be some criteria behind all of these TDRs as a way to, to start to-
Thank you. I was looking at protection of agricultural lands, but I think that's a good conversation for the continuance of finding ways to do the TDR program. So when we even talk about, you know, there are places that are beautiful and we want to keep those, but specifically, I'm trying to support the tradition of growing food where we are. Next would be the lowering of recidivism through comprehensive outreach. And this one comes directly from a project that I was working on before, I don't know if it was before I was working with the county, but we have a lot of opportunity, and we have recidivism. And I know that our, our warden and community services do a lot of work together. Comprehensive outreach, I am beyond excited about the behavioral health capacity that we're, we're building within the county, and a partner that I think can really work closer with us. Our economic development has worked with Santa Fe Community College before, through the Pro-Tech program. During my time, Pro-Tech, I believe, was unfunded. There is an opportunity to support training programs, or work with, I don't know anything about how much we work with pre-trial, but to have a comprehensive strategy for someone who, hey, look, you, you did something, you don't want to end up going to jail, but if you get into this program, you will be supported to not have to. And, and there are some really powerful groups out there now that didn't exist during my time with the Workforce Integration Network. It wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for the work specifically of Jennifer and Ann, of our community services program, because of the work that they've done with Unites and creating Connect. But to have something that captures a person, you know, we're doing enough to say, all right, they're going to walk down this road, then we'll do something to make sure the path is clear. But what does it mean about, mean to have a safety net to capture somebody when they walk out and say, "And by the way, here are the services." We know we have a number of people who have substance use disorder and mental health things that need to be addressed, issues that need to be addressed. So I see a huge opportunity, I already see it happening, but it is a high priority, an opportunity to really reduce that recidivism, and saying, you don't have to end up back in here, or even, you know, I would say worse yet, in the pen, or whatever the case may be, if a person's not getting that. So to comprehensively work together with strategies that are not questionable, and then I say with regard to the actual impact they're having. We know, when I say impact, we know we have a certain number of people who go into the RISE house. We also know that a certain amount of people in the RISE house end up back on the streets, or end up ending back up at our jail, or worse yet, into the prison. So how do we have a comprehensive program that, when we're supporting these, these grants to these external partners, that the accountability is there, and we know, you know, this is the number that didn't come back, and that worked through our housing system, through this other partner, et cetera? What I'm grateful for in saying this out loud, and making sure that it's completely part of our strategic plan discussion, is that I know that the parties who are working on it are very well aware of it and its benefits. So, I say that in the interest more also, is to get the community college more directly involved with our jail, maybe get back our Pro-Tech program for training wastewater operators are needed so bad. Um, I'll try this one again. Anyway, nope, this one's working now. I'll leave it off. So, the, to get folks trained, when somebody says, "Yeah, well, there's no job," how do we make sure this is lined up? How do we stop the scatter and the wandering in the streets to direct people? I believe we have the, most of the infrastructure. I'd like to see the community partners working very strategically together on everything we're doing. You know, I think the community college should have a flyer at the exit of every person saying, "These are the training programs available if you need it." Now, don't get me wrong, I know there are people with master's degrees who end up in our jail, but there are those also who may not have an idea of where they're going to work. And there are those who aren't going to be capable of working if they don't get the behavioral services support before they go try to get a job. So, it's comprehensive. It's not just a, now go get a job, but, you know, you're not going to do anything to address your substance use disorder. We, we just let that right now, it's, it's scattered. It's not, now we've got somebody who's going to be directly connected, we don't have that level of wraparound service or intervention, and it has to be agreed upon by the adult who's being released, but it's not impossible. I say that in argument with someone at the community college who said, "Well, I don't know if we can do that." And the answer was, "I've seen other counties do it." The opportunity with that WIN grant was, there were national conversations over that federally funded grant, and they are doing it. So, how do we have a comprehensive strategy that gets that person before they end up meeting up with our sheriff's department again? Or, whatever. You know, whatever support they need, they get that addressed from the very beginning. I can't tell you how absolutely grateful I am that we have the insight and expertise of the behavioral health specialists who work with us. So it's doable. So that one is a biggie. That's my second one. I've said a lot more than I expected to, but I did want to sort of lay the groundwork of why I think this is doable, and what, and to what level that integration of our work needs to be.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I'll ask Ann and the warden to separately address, you know, their components of exactly that type of comprehensive planning that we all agree is, is, is well timed and warranted.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'll speak briefly on that. I think we've made great strides and traction in our collaboration with community services. I'll speak briefly on a couple. The first is, you know, we have the HERSA grant, which allows PMS Presbyterian, we have two peer support workers who are onsite five days a week, specifically targeting those individuals leaving custody, making sure that they have linkage to services into the community. And we are collecting data on that also, so we have something to show and talk about moving forward, and we can continue to progress in that process. We also have a contract with the Santa Fe Community College, which we just recently, resubmitted and are happy to get that going. That's really going to help expand on services for specifically right now for our female population, regarding family reunification, parenting classes, and much more services that are much in need for those particular individuals. The community services department also helped us link up with Workforce Solutions, who in fact will be onsite tomorrow at the facility, and we will have a new partnership with them that we're excited to have. That'll give inmates and individuals incarcerated much more amplified opportunities for job placement and other things of that nature moving forward in the future. The last two I'll speak of is the New Mexico reentry, which we've talked briefly about in the past. They've been a really, they're a nonprofit organization, and they've just been really a group that's put their feet to the fire, so to speak. They've actually helped several individuals that were homeless and having difficulty obtaining jobs, get into homes, because they've purchased, I know, two recent properties, one in, I think, Rio Reba, and one in Santa Fe, they have another one in Albuquerque. But they also have great contacts with local car dealerships in Albuquerque, helping individuals get into a vehicle after they've come out of incarceration. They help people get to appointments, they've helped people find jobs, and they're putting people into homes. And with that group specifically, I'll tell you, they've, they've committed to us at ADF, the Adult Detention Facility, that they're dedicating some of their beds specifically for folks coming out of our facility that we've been working with. So I, I have to just give credit to those individuals. And I think that's, but I don't know if Ann wants to jump in with anything.
Thank you for the opportunity. So, I recognize we have time constraints, so I want to talk at a very high level. Yeah? We know this is an important topic, and in my reflections, I also want to hit some of the points made by some of the other commissioners. And the first thing that I want to address is our thinking regionally. And so, when we are talking here this morning, we're really talking about city-county. The state is now returning to, as it relates to behavioral health, not just thinking regionally, but acting regionally, and forcing the hands at the local level to do that if we want to tap into certain funds. So, I just, you know, kind of preface that the county manager is going to be meeting separately with each of you to talk more. If there is time, I want to point to a website where you can take a much deeper dive. But as it relates to behavioral health and recidivism in particular, with our state-identified and designated region of Rio Reba County, Los Alamos County, Santa Fe County, and seven different pueblos, six different pueblos, and the Hickory Apache Nation, all communities are served in one way or another by the warden and the deputy warden and their team there. It is a regional jail. Are there ways where we can more wisely leverage resources, especially when we know that this is really going to be the new landscape? I also want to underscore the point that you made, Chair, that, in my words, not yours, but the therapeutic value of work. And coming from a child welfare background, it is J O B over R T C. There is something about hitching your wagon to a vehicle that allows you to express your talents. And we hear that there is a need to help those with private roads, and they don't have the funds to do that. That is a great opportunity in terms of workforce, and that's something that the reentry center, that Department of Workforce Solutions is working towards. As well, there was one other, when we're talking about ag lands, right, and preservation of ag lands, I'm thinking about in Sandoval County, where many of those were leased, and there was a pilot that had some challenges, but it was work release. And so, really looking to see where and how we can leverage our human resources within our region far more effectively, because being in a cell is just a tremendous waste of human potential. So, thank you very much, we take it seriously, and we are working together regionally to address it.
Thank you, Ann. I'm curious as to why San Miguel County and Taos aren't in our region, given that the COG, the Council of Governments, includes those two counties, as does the Work, Northern Workforce Board?
Chair, thank you so much, that's very timely. So I am going to ask, Daniel, can you pull up the Maine County website kindly, or Stephanie or whomever is driving? So the answer to that, Chair, is this was a state-determined decision to align districts with judicial districts. And what is puzzling is that when you look at the state of New Mexico and the different departments, the Department of Health divides the state into its own districts, CYFD divides the state into its own, the AOC divides into its own. So, the good news is when you look at it geographically, and when we just, you know, think about things reasonably, we, there's nothing stopping us from in many ways, in a de facto way, determining our own region. So for example, the healthcare authority just dropped a notice of funding opportunity for $2 million. Everyone's kind of scrambling, and it has to go through each particular region. Guess what? San Miguel County might want to partner. Guess what? Region eight with Taos might want to partner, right? And then that would get the quadrant. So I think there are still some good things happening, but the answer is, it, it wasn't our decision. So if you look at, this is the Maine County webpage, and I'll just point you to it and not take a deep dive now, but Behavioral Health Reform, in the effort to be fully transparent. Oh, let's see. So this is simply a disclaimer, we're trying to communicate and provide information with a very fast-paced, you know, state- you know, state-determined effort. And this, we are working diligently to keep up on a daily basis. So you just click that, I understand. And you can go through it. It's one page, it's state status, and then it's regional status. But I, whomever is driving, if it's Stephanie or Daniel, I just want to point to, for the Chair, if we go to the state letter, that was, yes, thank you. And then let's scroll to then where we get to the map. If you could kindly, Daniel, I think it's page nine. So we have all of the hyperlinks, full transparency, that everybody can take a look at. But I just want to point to, here we go. So this is how the state divided what they are calling behavioral health regions. So we are behavioral health region one. And I'd like to just, you know, again, name the 14 governments to really demonstrate not just our geographic complexity, right? Down south near Bernalillo County, but then all the way up to the Colorado border. But the governmental complexity. So we have the pueblos of Okeo Ingay, of San Ai, of Santa Clara, of Nambey, of Pawake, Tausuke. We also have the Hickory Apache Nation. We have the counties of Los Alamos, Santa Fe County, and Rio Reba County, cities of Espaniola, city of Santa Fe, town of Edgewood, and village of Chama. So that level of complexity and really then devising something to address behavioral health regionally is the new order, as it were. I recognize that's a long answer, but if you want to pull out of that, and then you can go down and then see regional status. I don't want to sidetrack us now, but it is worth a, you know, taking the dive.
If I could, thank you, Chair Bustamante. You know, as I previously mentioned to the board, I want to thank, you know, Ann and her team for their willingness to step up to serve as an accountable entity for the first behavioral health region planning effort. There weren't a lot of takers, quite candidly, to put it mildly, in terms of folks who were willing to do that work and help coordinate that regional planning effort. And as I've mentioned to the board in the past, Ann and her team agreed to do that for the benefit, not only of Santa Fe County, but the entire region. Relative to the importance of, you know, this particular work, and as it relates to reentry, just wanted to underscore that, you know, the proposed strategy from CSD includes by December of next year to have exactly the comprehensive, all-inclusive reentry plan that you were highlighting, the importance of, Chair. And then in line with that, we would anticipate by that time, and in conjunction with that work, we would also have at least programming done relative to the significant remodel and expansion of the adult detention facility to really focus on substance abuse and other behavioral health treatment, as well as reentry programming. So a lot of things are going to come together in 2026, both the regional planning, as well as those comprehensive plans, and then building for the significant investment that I understood the board also supports relative to redesigning and expanding our jail to better serve the population that you've highlighted.
I appreciate that. So when we look at how we're going to work together internally to deal with these issues, right? We work together to address a problem. We also have some strong assets in our region. And another thing that's problematic with this map is it leaves out the eight northern pueblos. I know that this commission has a strong, and it's been said over and over, a strong interest in working intergovernmentally. And working intergovernmentally isn't always just working with Santa Fe, the city of Santa Fe. Intergovernmentally works with our pueblo neighbors. And working with our pueblo neighbors, one experience that we had with the Workforce Integration Network, were the number of people who wanted within the pueblos to be trained as community health workers. We, when we work within these other jurisdictions, we can actually support and get our academic institutions. So if we're dealing with the northern pueblos is in our area or working with, I don't mean in dealing with like it's a problem, but working with our eight northern, we have Taos, University of New Mexico Taos. We have the University of New Mexico, Los Alamos. We have Northern New Mexico College. When we work at how we're going to network and get people the support that they need or could use if they wanted to do an academic institution, we can't leave out Taos. We can't leave out those who don't fall within the boundary that the state determined is our regional boundary. If we're going to work intergovernmentally, the eight northern pueblos work very close with each other. Oftentimes, they'll all show up on certain issues, or a small representation will. But it's naive of us to not acknowledge, and I'm not saying, I'm not blaming anyone, I think our greater opportunity to not acknowledge working within those entities intergovernmentally can support the region as a whole as well.
Chair, just so you know, for full reassurances, and Philip Pettis has been at a number of our meetings, the current executive director of Eight Northern. You will see an IGA that will be posted here that requires MOUs with those whom you mentioned and more.
Thank you. All right. Is it a question?
It is, just to follow up on what you're talking about. You know, in the workforce development space and the opportunities, there's a body of work that's showing that we need to provide pathways for youth as well. And I think it's a very, it's similar but different. Obviously, recidivism is a different thing, and youth are pre, you know, pre-problematic. But it's the opportunity to keep them on a pathway towards success. And so I wonder if there's definitely some overlap opportunity there between mentorship programs and ways to get kids interested in their future. There was a gap during COVID years that I think we're seeing in youth violence right now, where kids were just put on a computer and, you know, didn't have that socialization aspect. And I think we need to make up for some lost time, but also rebuild that system earlier into the age group. And I've seen some work where they say that we need to get into middle school, and we're not in middle schools. And so I hope that there's an aspect to that as well.
George, Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green, 100% agree. The behavioral health workshop focused on youth is going to be later this year. Prevention is a big, big component of that, rather than just crisis. I talked with Roger Montoya as recently as yesterday, whom I think is a living example of exactly that, and will be in the audience to really push that. We also do have, through CSD or prevention programs, that are in the middle schools, in Pawake, et cetera. But I agree with you, it's a complex issue and one foot in front of the other. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. You know, I don't intend to start off with trying to reduce recidivism as this is the biggest problem. This is a low-hanging fruit. It is a way for us to get our measurables. It's a way for us to start to identify at that point. But otherwise, everything we're talking about, and I'm talking to the choir here, not even, I'm talking to the preachers. The, it is the opportunity, it's the opportunities that are being provided, right? We're not only going for those who have problems and issues and concerns. It's how do we create more opportunity within our communities to address all of it? Not just from the perspective of, we don't get them, this is what's going to happen. It's how can we create more opportunity for a stronger, healthier, more resilient community? So I appreciate that. I definitely thought about that one. Is there anything else with regard to this that you would want to address? Because it ties into the work that economic development was doing as well. And I don't know if they're on the same page with, you know, economic development working directly with the community college on that PROTEC was a powerful thing. And I don't know if anything like that exists anymore.
I'll just say, I agree 100% with everything you all have proffered. And I have taken my notes, because we definitely need to see more integration with this as workforce development. And so we'll put it on our list of to-dos.
Thank you. My third priority is community resilience through all hazard mitigation. I have to backpedal a little bit on a little bit of the mitigation plan in the direction that it needs to look just like the one Los Alamos has. It doesn't need to look just like the one Los Alamos has. And it has a large amount of what is expected to be in that plan. I will be honest, I am used to seeing documents more like the one that Los Alamos put out with an actual calculated risk analysis, but the information is there that's necessary. There is some information, and I won't agree that we can't tell where certain things are, because if a national lab with clearances has to disclose where hazards are, we have to disclose where hazards are. That being said, downplaying mitigation, and I will say, my experience has been, this isn't the response plan. This is mitigation, and I'm saying, yeah, at Katrina, it was all about what could have been done. And that is real-life experience. It was looking back and saying, what? I mean, I'd love to do root cause analysis. We can all look back and say, this is a big should've, would've, could'ves, but we didn't, and here we goes. And then we have strong response, we have real strong response, we have all of our units and all the served, you know, all the equipment that we need, et cetera. But if we don't have the boring job, and I'll say, somebody who's worked risk for a long time, the boring job of assuring that there's no activity, right? That there's no hazard, and I think it's our priority number two, a safe community, is assuring that our response is strong, yeah, that's great. But the boring work of saying, there won't be a fire over there. Or, right now, those arroyos aren't flooding anywhere near people's homes and taking out, you know, private property. And right now, we don't have X, Y, Z's. Yawn, yawn, you get to retire and become a county commissioner. And that's the kind of work that frankly, worked for me. But, you know, the point is mitigation avoids the problems. So as boring as a mitigation plan may seem to be, and it's a document that we have to check a box for, it's also about, well, what are we going to do to stand up these mitigation measures? How are we going to make sure that flooding won't occur to damage private or public structures? And actually taking those actions seriously. So that doesn't just go between emergency management, that goes right back to Public Works again, right? It's all, when I talk about the responses to the houses that were flooded in District Three, we could have had mitigation that the county would have done. Public Works has had to address it the whole time. But if certain things are in place, we don't have that kind of issue. And when we talk about things that have a potential for loss of life, we probably are doing it. And I say probably. But right now, we have a plan, and it's just the mitigation plan. There's no just the mitigation plan when it comes to things like the sustainability, things like making sure mitigation is in place, and structures are there to keep it boring. So that's the perspective that I'm working on, and it goes back to community resilience in its biggest picture. But how do we make sure we look like that? Not the look like, did you hear what happened in Chi Mayo? And it's not that we all knew it was going to flood like that. We are about to, we are on the cusp of seeing weather patterns that we've never seen before. You know, I mean, it's something that's different. And it's not going to get easier whether people believe in it or not. This isn't an issue of faith. This is about what's happening in the environment. And you can, you know, pray it goes away, and that might work. But the fact is, how do we address those things as they have a potential to get worse? Do I hear an amen? I mean, what do, please, somebody help us.
Chair Bustamante and Commissioners, I think, you know, we understood the board's direction to have another look at the mitigation plan, and also make sure that it is front and center as we do our capital planning, relative to make sure that we are, you know, prioritizing the mitigations that have already been identified, as well as, again, others, as we go through our, you know, THIRA, Threat Hazard Assessment Planning. So that is moving forward, and we'll move forward in 2026. And I think, again, the capital outlay portion of it is to make sure that that is, you know, where the priority investments are being made relative to mitigation strategies. So I think that's what I would, you know, say relative to that. And I know that Public Works was involved in and is very much aware of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And we'll be making sure that, you know, it is prioritizing those mitigation, you know, efforts. So that would be my initial response. And if anyone has anything else to add, either from emergency management or for Public Works, I'd turn it over to them.
Yes, I'd like to take just a moment to address some of those. And I really appreciate the words that you've expressed today. One of the most important things that we need to realize when we start talking about mitigation is we have to know what the issues are before we can mitigate them. We have undertaken to complete a THIRA document, which is called Threat Hazard and Identification of Risk Assessment. This is really a threefold, or threefold process with the THIRA. Those entail what threats and hazards can affect our community? If these threats or hazards occur, what impacts those threats and hazards have on our community? And then based on those impacts, what capabilities should our community have? These all lead directly to a document that we've also just finished completing, and we're working on the finalization of it called an SPR, a Stakeholder Preparedness Review. These aspects, these three steps, form a process and lay the foundation for determining a community's capability gaps, as you've expressed, as part of that Stakeholder Preparedness Review. Many of the departments in this room, in fact, most of them have had the opportunity to have input, some of the great responses we had from FIRE, and from our sheriffs, and from our RECC to this Stakeholder Preparedness Review, will lead us directly to be able to address those issues that you've talked about. Not just mitigate them, but we, you know, how can we respond? What are our stakeholders doing? What capabilities do they have? And so we'll have that document, pretty much it's in its final stages now, getting that prepared, the THIRA and the SPR, it's two separate documents melded into one. I think the most important part is the Stakeholder Preparedness Review, which we've undertaken, and I think that we're just about completed with that.
I appreciate that. The other thing that we no longer have, that we used to have, was a community emergency response team. And the reason that one existed was because it was easy to get the community college together to set, stand that up. And working with the nursing and emergency folks at the college, the cool thing about that is that the students and younger people get exposure to the person in the green vest and the opportunity to work in an emergency capacity that isn't putting them at a risk that we would be liable for, except to have someone there, for example, to fill sandbags when the water goes into, is potentially going to go into somebody's house. If we could establish, and I, you know, a part of me was telling the manager, I'll quit and send up community emergency response teams, whatever it takes to get, because when the younger folks get the adrenaline rush, and I used to believe this wholeheartedly as a hazmat worker, the adrenaline rush of, oh my gosh, this could really be bad, is as exciting as driving 110 miles an hour, you know, with a case of beer. I mean, how do you, I'm not saying I know what that feels like, I really, I don't. I don't, but I know what the, I know what the adrenaline rush feels like. I know what it feels like to, you know, to be there and go, holy crap, this could really go bad if we're not here to address this like this. And if you're the one who's there saying, look, woman who's 80 years old, and this water's heading to your house, we're going to be the ones here to help you get those sandbags, and we're going to help protect you, that feels good too. And that's where I say CERTs are valuable. And ideally, we'd have CERTs in all of our districts. Before that, we had a CERT that, you know, that came from the college and went to Chi Mayo. But, you know, there too, I was on that CERT when a guy came up with a heart attack, you know. So it mattered, I'm glad we were there. And his last name was Bustamante, but we're not related, just a fact. But the point, just saying. But the point is, it matters, and I'm grateful for that, that matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to address the CERT teams directly. We have, I'm a big believer in the CERT program. That is how I got my start in emergency management. I'm a big believer in the CERT program. That is how I got my start in Emergency Management years and years and years ago, 15, 20 years ago, as a volunteer with CERT. So I am 100% in agreement with you with the CERT program, the importance of it, and how it can affect our community, help our community, and put these things on the forefront, issues that we're all facing. The community college's CERT team has kind of gone inactive at the moment. We are in the process of looking at what we need to do to put together a CERT team for the county. Unfortunately, federal funding, as it is, has been kind of slashed as far as CERT programs. However, we have put together operational, standard operational procedures and bylaws for our CERT program, and it's really just a matter of, we had a couple other issues we had to address with liability insurance, which we've, which the county manager's done an excellent job, and our legal team, in addressing those issues and HR, making sure that we're fully compliant with liability, make sure those volunteers are covered in the event of an incident with them. So we're absolutely actively looking at putting that together. And I feel really confident that if we can overcome the financial hurdles of outfitting, preparing, and training a team, those initial, it's called a 317 course, CERT 317 course, that's the initial training for those volunteers, that was kind of put on a hiatus with the federal government, issues that they had, but that has been since reopened, and we can hopefully get that done. I was a certified train-the-trainer for CERT in another state, so I still hold that credential, and we can absolutely put that together and get things started, and get that CERT program established here in Santa Fe County again.
And Chair, to put a fine point on it, what we would propose to put in the strategic plan is that the CERT program would be stood up by June 30, as a strategy. June 30.
30th, 30th?
Yeah.
Is it a question? Or just telling them how to do their job?
No.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I filled out the THIRA questionnaire, and one of the areas that I have found from hearing from other communities is cybersecurity. And not only our own robustness internally, but really looking at the external stakeholders, the power companies, the other jurisdictions, and making sure that we have, you know, sometimes we're in a better position to help some of those organizations, or understand what their vulnerabilities are. And when I look at likelihood of catastrophes, you know, God forbid any of these things happen, but it seems like cybersecurity is becoming one of those emergent threats that can take down our power grid. And taking down our power grid makes it where we can't heat our homes, and then, you know, it doesn't even take a cold day to ruin things, right? So I just want to make sure that that's on the radar of, of the THIRA and the, and our emergency management, because it wasn't in one of those scenarios. And reading through those scenarios, you sort of said, that's likely, that's likely, that's likely, this wasn't on there, but it is just as likely, if not more likely.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, as a direct response for your response to our THIRA survey, that was added into the THIRA. So when you, when you look at the THIRA, and I will be presenting that document to you folks soon, when you look at the THIRA, there is a lot of scenarios that are presented. Cybersecurity was one of those scenarios that we added to the THIRA in a direct response to your comments and others in the community, making sure that's addressed, so that we have our capabilities in line with those issues, with those situations. Also pandemic was added in that. So those two scenarios were added after those, those initial surveys were dispersed. And again, that Stakeholder Preparedness Review, which is part of the THIRA, addresses those. So how are we prepared as a county, with our various departments and entities and stakeholders, to address these scenarios? What are our capabilities? And how can those capabilities respond to these scenarios and these events and the eventualities? So yes, sir, that is, that is absolutely addressed.
I'm, I'm glad that Chair Bustamante put this one on. It was a unique one across all of us. And Mr. Call, thank you. I looked at, you know, I looked at your survey in detail and appreciate, especially the scenarios. And I just want to say, count me in when we're ready to go to the community. I got very excited about that and sent you community surveys back, English and Spanish. But I think the scenarios lend itself for health literacy for our communities. We could tell the story, even do scenario, maybe with images, with different populations that learn differently in English and Spanish, and then see where they're ready, where they're not, what they understand are the entry points, who they contact. So I'm excited. When do you think that next step might happen as we think about our strategic priorities?
The community surveys that you prepared, Commissioner, were, were good. We're going to have to address how we would distribute to those communities, and then what, what would be the eventual usefulness, and how could we put those responses into play? Again, when we do a THIRA, our Stakeholder Preparedness Review is more of our partners, our tribal partners as an entity, and our departments like Fire and Sheriff as an entity. We are very, very concerned about what the public needs and their wants as well. And so surveys absolutely can, do have a place. We're under discussion of how we could possibly distribute those, and what, what value we could bring with the responses back to not only OEM as a department, but as a county as a whole, and what, how we could put those into play. The issue is how to distribute them, how to collect the data, and how to get that data returned in a cogent manner. So, we're working on that, but I did appreciate you putting together those surveys. We did review that both in English and Spanish. And once we figure out how to get that out there, and get those things responded, collected, and then collated, I think that's going to be our next challenge, but we will be working on that.
Thank you. That's all I had, unless there's anyone who wanted to address any part of that. We'll move on to Commissioner Kokari Stone's priorities.
Thank you. I think this is the time of the strategic planning where we can tell a story. So this is a story about the six mice and the fat cat. And the six mice have had it with the fat cat, running around, and it was an old cat too, so I'm being both ageist here. But the cat was so ornery, just wouldn't give him a break, and the mice wanted to get to the cheese. And so years went by, and they couldn't get around the house much, so they came up with a plan together. And they sat around, like we're sitting around, and said, what can we do about this ornery cat, this cat who just won't let us get to the cheese? And so they threw ideas around, and one group, one said, let's do, let's just try to distract them, another said this, that. But they came up with this idea of, let's put a bell on the cat, so when the cat came around, we could hear that cat, and then we could know when it's clear to go get the cheese. So the question was, with all the leadership management team of the mice, who's going to put the bell on the cat? They never put the bell on the cat because no one wanted to take that risk. I share this story because in a lot of way, ways, who, who is the cat? And I wanted to just start, because we got the seven questions from Stephanie, and I think the cat is our current political, social, and environmental climate, right? How do we as a leadership team rally around that cat, and what are some of the areas that we're rallying around to have good governance? What is our vision? What is our mission, right? When we do strategic planning, we have the why. We want to be accountable. We want to be responsible. We want to use taxpayers' monies in a good way. So we're dealing with, I think Alex mentioned in the earlier Water Summit, seniors have grown by 33%. So we have that going on. We have the demographics of diversity. We have the demographics of, besides an aging population, just around income, and income inequality, and the widening wealth divide. The cat is climate pressure, and that climate pressure on our water supply, escalating land and housing costs due to some of the national environment and the national climate. I want to also mention just increased development pressure. When we, you know, talk to developers, how do we keep them here, when, with the increase in tariffs at the national level, right? Other issues also include what we know is the public health crisis of our time, and that's our behavioral health crisis. And we are really looking at justice, youth justice. We know that our detention centers nationwide, you all talk to different counties, we're a model here, but we're basically treatment centers when I talk to other commissioners from other states, right? 3,140 counties, this, this is it. So that's the cat. And I want to just talk about the bell, in terms of my three policy priorities, following Stephanie's instructions to have big picture. And as I name them, I won't duplicate what my Commissioner colleagues have already said, but I want to highlight something I've already hear as an overarching theme, as we think about our vision for strategic planning. It's integrating across silos and alignment. That's what I heard a lot of you discuss, that's what I hear my collegial commissioners, and what I read from Commissioner Johnson's priorities as well. Governance and accountability, centering customer service, but that also means not just customer service from a business model, but centering our communities across all of the county, from a community-centric model. And that also number, the other one is big overarching, the safety and health of our communities, and sustainability and protection of our lands and waters. So those are overarching. I'm going to just highlight a couple new, my first priority, and you, on page five of the integrated handout I gave you, I have three, but I'll focus first on behavioral health, safety, and community resiliency. Community resiliency nationally, right, has really piqued as a solution around policy and community-driven interventions. We learned that because of COVID-19. All of us here, all of you here, we're leading the most innovative ways you could to serve our communities with that. And the roots of community resiliency, the other side of it, is what we learned through COVID is the complex grief. This has become something that is across many populations. You probably see it in the detention center, community services with youth, the complex grief even that we hear in the community narrative around land loss, around the grief of not having sustainable water. So, a strategic priority for me, as I think collectively in our leadership role, is how do we design trauma response systems in our behavioral health system? How do we use, some of us have been through behavioral health reforms in New Mexico, I've been through three, going back to the early 90s. But how do we use what we know, what we do across all our particular units that we work in, to have trauma informed, whether that be housing, whether that be around we do with this exciting new youth center and building, where I understand we're going to close in January on it. I think the other piece is, this means the operations, open spaces become important in terms of healing trauma, and making those open spaces and lands accessible to everyone. Public safety, you all deal with trauma in many ways, and you have innovations as well of dealing with trauma with our frontline workers, those of you, those that work for you. So I think I just want to put that, that's a priority, and prevention. We talk about treatment all the time. And I think, working with Senator Worth in those earlier conversations last year around the behavioral health reform, we really are not going to be successful in how as a county, we remain a leader in the region for the behavioral health reform, and really challenge this criminal justice model we have around behavioral health, even doing what Commissioner, Chair Bustamante said, why do we have it regions divided this way? Because it's through the judicial system regions. How do we center prevention? And prevention, we have since the 80s, a plethora of science and research on prevention with our diverse populations. So I want to put, trauma prevention is important. Number two, in terms of affordable housing, just to add to some of the discussion, is one of the gaps I've observed by listening to constituents, listening to all of you in land use and community development, also sitting with Commissioner Green on this city, Home Wise, what do we call it, livability series, is this disconnect, as you've all described, how do we simplify? Oh my gosh, how do we simplify our sustainable development codes and mitigate frontline discretion? And, and it's not anybody's fault, but how do people make decisions when the codes are so complex? And I just really want to support that idea of coming together with the city and combing through those. And I think, in listening to city councilors and the city planning committee, they're very motivated to do that. The other housing piece is taking our community organizational plans, our registered organizations, the, and, and what they have written as plans, and looking at those and doing more alignment. And I know Alex, I personally have met with your team in the traditional village of Agua Fria, but how do we do that, bringing in Public Works? Brian and his team got me all jazzed about having quarterly meetings with you all, and with community services as well. The final priority, and then we can just open up for where people want to go, is water, land, and energy justice for community well-being. We, not by design but default, as local government, fall into traditional modalities of land and water as commodities. And I think the leadership challenge for us as strategic planning is how do we shift that narrative? How do we shift that narrative in our policies, going back to the bell? How do we shift that narrative in our practices and our procedures? And part of it is, was mentioned by your team again, and I totally align with it, is that core values. How do we put our core values into policy? And how do we come together around that? So how do we advance a regional approach to water and land stewardship, that also, how do we update the sustainable land development codes and growth management plans to reflect solar expansion? We know that some of the applications that are come, have come this way this year, that were very complex. We've had to vote, have quasi-judicial hearings on these. And the National Association of Counties, Olivia Padilla, I asked her to look into it, they have a technical assistance group on what counties are doing nationally. 3,140 again, instead of looking at what they're doing wrong, what are they doing right, and they're willing to offer us as a county support on modernizing so that solar energy and renewable energy just doesn't benefit global corporations, but actually benefits our communities in really meaningful ways. And how do we grow our community engagement tools beyond outreach, right? Our community engagement tools across all our units to really integrate across those silos, so that communities are authentic and meaningful part of the planning. I'll stop there, and whether we want to talk about behavioral health, affordable housing, water and energy, why don't we just behavioral health first? And what I heard was some alignment, but if you can point us to, what's your plans for the future that might align with this vision, and where, where in the document could we reach to? Anything's welcome.
Chair and Commissioner Kokari Stone, Daniel, can I ask you to put up our PowerPoint, if you would? So thank you so much for all of that, and I hope there's a test about the cat and the bell.
There is.
But, you know, one of the primary points that you raised, and I just want to underscore that has all of us here, what are our core values, right? And how do those then translate? So, I won't go into this necessarily, but when we look at our mission, at the heart of what we do is the centralized anchor for both current operations, as well as new strategic initiatives. And so, we just have two slides, one that focuses on our operations, and then the second that focuses on those new strategic initiatives. And so if you could just forward one, and Commissioner Kokari- And so if you could just forward one, and Commissioner Kokari Stone, this Senate Bill three, as the accountable entity and the initial lead, it is going to be a lift and one that we believe will be well worth it. We actually have packets for you and copies, if that's helpful. Okay, perfect. And we debated, do we put that in operations or do we put that as part of our, a new strategy? And the challenge, of course, is that we're not in the driver's seat. We are at the effect of this legislation. And so one of, you know, the first rules is if you can't control it, right? That is going to be problematic. But I do invite you to take a deeper dive into the website because that I pointed to earlier, for example, at one of the regional meetings yesterday, we have health councils within the three counties that were mentioned, in addition to all of those pueblos. And we have a behavioral health leadership council. That is a stakeholder group that can align for the region as a part of behavioral health reform and should, rather than working in those silos. I think that our department has the highest number of community groups as part of that transparency that lends itself very much towards behavioral health. So I, this, whether it's in operations or whether it's part of the strategic plan, it really is going to be a new day in terms of leveraging resources and a top priority for the region, not just for the county. But I don't, you know, I don't know if that answers your question specifically or helps to reassure you that with your strategic priority, number three of behavioral health, safety and community resilience is 100% a priority of the county and also this initiative within the region.
Absolutely, Ann. And I, I know you and your team are so on top of this and so engaged. And do you see that we would need to, at this point in time, can we write some overarching goal around behavioral health reform in this plan that makes it flexible enough that we wouldn't have to amend it? Because it seems like these regional convenions are going to sort of morph into something more detailed, right? We don't know that yet because we don't have a crystal ball. But I guess I just want to invite you to take the lead on maybe writing something that can be general enough, or maybe you already have.
It is in process because even though we are the lead, it is a regionally collaborative effort. But I also want to reassure you, Commissioner Kokari Stone, that prevention is a big part of it, that we 100% understand the importance of trauma informed and the crisis continuum. We also understand that, you know, there is, children learn what they live, right? And so it, it's very sad when you have children identifying with social constructs rather than the things such as play, fresh air, water. And so can we, yes, we need to be behavioral health centric, but not at the expense of creating a generation that self identifies in ways that, that don't naturally allow them to be human. So anyhow, I don't want to continue down this path. I just, I think, you know, we need to also proceed with caution about over reliance on social constructs that are tied to behavioral health that adversely impact identity of a human being just trying to figure it out.
I love that. And I think it, it lends itself to this working across silos, right? Where we live, work and play and making that part of our healthy community. Thank you, Ann. And what about affordable housing rooted in people in place and aligning more of our cultural people landscapes with, you know, we can do it. We can multitask, aligning that with housing developments, affordable housing.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, I'm an ardent believer in ecosystems based approaches. I think that many of the challenges we are attempting to solve require people of different skills and abilities to be able to address those challenges. If I think about, for example, if you're attempting to work through education challenges, it's difficult to do that if you don't think about housing and food security and you don't think about poverty. And so I'm one of those types of professionals who wants to find the mechanisms to be able to work seamlessly together towards integrated problem solving. So I agree with that. I think what we are doing to a degree with the permanent supportive housing kind of working group we've established is kind of setting a model for how we can do this and how we can co-design together. Some of the, I think, strategies that we are looking to implore, particularly as far as if you take both housing and you take the assets that we own as property owners within our housing authority, are thinking about how can we ensure that we center residents more, both in engagement, both in problem solving. I know we've been working explicitly on some of that work. And within any organization and institutional, I do think that there is some culture shifting sometimes that has to happen in order for us to get better results. And so I think our teams across the spectrum are working ardently on that. If I were to center sort of how we think we can think through some of just big picture ideas on housing, I'm really thinking about trying to simplify in some ways our language for how we approach this. And I'm trying to just sort of introduce just this sort of, this context of production and preservation of affordable housing. If you think about production, yes, we are talking about the deals you all have been approving. We're talking about ways to introduce new units. We're talking about ways to how we do that in a smart, sustainable ways. And also how do we, you know, partner with growth management again on those modifications to the land development code that we think are helpful. From an institutional and an organizational standpoint, I would also say, we haven't done in our history, a lot of complex real estate, affordable housing developments within Santa Fe County. And so we are doing that and we are learning on the job, right? And that requires both our teams to be much more familiar and adept. In some ways, we are working on co-educating ourselves and, and bringing you all along in those processes. I think that's important in order to think about continuing to build on what we started. It's not just the tools of low income housing tax credits. There are a lot of tools in the toolbox that I'm thinking we have to be much more deliberate and intentional about how we exercise some of those tools. So that's what I think about from the production standpoint, from the preservation standpoint. I'm also thinking about those residents who have lived in community for generations. How do we ensure that they are living in great conditions? They have access to resources to be able to stay in place? When we think about both an aging community and we thinking, we think about the sort of price of housing inflation in our community, how do we center some of those things that ensure that people can continue to remain in place? So those are some of the things that are top of mind. I know Commissioner Green put in terms of these thought processes around missing middle housing. We've had conversations with Commissioner Johnson about these ideas of how do we do more master planned type of developments in ways that account for mixed uses, mixed incomes, different housing stock, diversity in housing options. All of those things are top of mind. And I think as we drill down in our various divisions, we're thinking about that. I'll also add one final note. When we think about assets that we own and trying to ensure that people are living in top notch conditions and that your income does not define the quality of which you live, those are things that are tantamount to our thought processes when we think about some of the development deals you all have already supported. If I think about turquoise trail, for example, we're talking about very, very high quality, all affordable housing developments. That's significant. And the, both the unit production, the economic driver will be in terms of everything from construction, the new taxes it will create, significant. And so I think from my vantage point, if I think about what we're attempting to do and how we are just trying to frame that, it's about production, preservation, smart, sustainable growth, and it's also ensuring that we have the resources to be able to do what we're attempting to do and that we partner and collaborate with entities who are trying to recognize our core values and move in the same direction.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, I'm going to actually cut myself short because Commissioner Johnson needs to go and I know you.
We're going to be okay.
Okay.
I've checked in and I will check in with the manager and everyone else. Our scribe is going to leave at one, but well, if we continue, she will use the remainder, so the recording will be available to her. So I would like to get a feel for the room on continuing. I don't want to cut anyone off and I think this is important conversation.
Yeah, the question for the group is, is everyone free this afternoon to continue on in the, you know, hopes or potential of not reconvening tomorrow? Or would we prefer to break and come back? I think that's the question being asked. I can make myself available, but anyone want to raise their hand if you can't continue this afternoon?
I can go until about 1:45 appointment.
Okay.
Is that your question?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Chair Bustamante. So I wanted to go back to.
If I could, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I just, I don't want to, while we're on the topic of brainstorming, I think as the, if the board chooses, you know, to continue to invest in the developer assistance program and work that in tandem with multi-family conduit financing revenue bonds, I think there is an opportunity for the county to potentially look at, you know, making as a requirement of those approvals, you know, some components of, you know, trauma informed, you know, design or, you know, amenities. We would have to, you know, again, work through what those might look like as well as, you know, making sure that, you know, we're not tilting the, the projects into the, you know, into the non feasible as a result. But I think that's an opportunity that we could explore in terms of a concrete action that could be taken away from the meeting. And I think if I could just touch upon the open space, you know, element of it and perhaps suggest, and Alex can address, there are two different aspects that I thought about in reviewing your material. You know, one is, you know, what are those elements that could be considered as part of, you know, future open space, you know, development? I mean, are there particular design elements that we could incorporate into a trail product, project, for example, what have you? But there's also in, you know, your materials, an equity investment or acquisition component. And so I wanted Alex to potentially address whether that might be something we ask COLPAK to, you know, develop in terms of looking at an overarching plan as it relates to the acquisition and development of open space and parks, but then also, you know, propose or, you know, work through potential considerations or relative, relative to, you know, trauma informed design. I didn't mean to, but I, those were things that came to my mind that I wanted to elaborate if you'd like us to. Alex, do you want to address the COLPAK idea?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioner Kokari Stone. I think COLPAK is very, is a group of very knowledgeable people with a range of expertise related to the natural environment and also very supportive of the concept that people do better when they have access to open space and, and nature and, and understanding that. I, I think they could deepen their understanding in, in that area for sure. But it's certainly, they are a very analytical, very committed group of individuals and, and taking on a conversation like this and kind of creating some sort of policy around it is, is probably something, I mean, I'm speaking for them, but I would imagine that they would be interested in exploring it.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I do want to make sure I cut myself off. I do my own time check here and I appreciate all the comments so far, but because our law enforcement's here and our fire, our leadership's, the sheriff, our fire department is here, I wanted to ask your strategic vision around behavioral health and what you deal with and how can we align some of this vision we have from your expertise?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, so yes, so addressing mental health for our fire responders is a top priority for us. So we are actively engaging with mental health professionals so that when our responders are experienced calls that may put them under abnormal stressors, that they have the resources available to follow up immediately or long term as well. So we are developing policies, processes and providing resources for our members, both on the regional paid side as well as the district volunteer side as well, to receive services and to address any concerns that come up.
Is the vision you want for this next year reflected in our strategic plan being proposed today? Because I just want to be sure to capture things that's not in there or to highlight what's there and align our efforts.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Kokari Stone, yes. So specifically within the fire department strategic plan, that is, we do believe that that is captured in some of the objective that we have to ensure that we have a robust staff and team members that are able to provide that. And so we do have the structure and the ability to pursue that.
But is it in our combined integrated? I know everyone has their own strategic plans and I think I mentioned this to Stephanie, that we got a strategic plan here, you have yours, you have yours, you have yours. How do we align it all? Is it in this one today that we're looking at?
Commissioner, I believe it, within the, what we submitted from the fire department, there is room to address that within the fire department strategic plan. How that incorporates with the overall county strategic plan, I would defer that to possibly Stephanie to see how we can, and if that is reflected as collaboratively.
So how could we do that, Stephanie, to make sure what Chief Black is addressing and around the behavioral health, how can we align that with the bigger strategic plan?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. We can certainly add an objective. We pulled this up, hoping this would help. We could add a strategy specific to behavioral health needs of the fire department. As Chief Black was alluding to though, we believe that's covered in this overarching objective, the 1.2. It talks about the fire department's capacity specifically through operational excellence, workforce development, organizational sustainability, and I would argue providing the resources that our staff and volunteers need to be able to do their job effectively falls in there. However, if we specifically want to call it out, we can certainly do so.
Okay, well, let's keep that in our parking lot for tomorrow, right? We're coming back tomorrow.
May I ask a question about in this sort of space that I don't know if it's, it's more of an external thing, but it's the in between sheriff's office and fire and in the behavioral health space and mental health space, an alternative response unit? And I'm wondering if, you know, this came up in conversations with Albuquerque and with the city of Santa Fe as a best practice for taking a little bit of the load off of the sheriff's department and some of the risk out of the sheriff's department and some of the load and issues out of the fire department. And so wondering if there's, one of the best practices that Albuquerque is doing and Santa Fe wants to do is to actually move it into community services. And so it takes the load off of you guys, it works in conjunction with you, and I'm wondering if that's a space that we want to look at here. And I bring it up now because of beginnings of an initiative between, with Albuquerque and myself to look at creating the fire department program that we've used to train and to bring on people and to train and bring them on for three years. The idea that there might be a state fund that we could advocate for at the legislature to jumpstart that and expand our capacity in community services, alternative response unit for mental and behavioral health responses, that we could actually go to the legislature and get $30 million for a statewide program to train up one or two teams that we would have that coverage, take the load off of you guys and respond to this.
So I'll start and Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Green. So one of the things that the fire department did was we looked at what our main areas of service were, fire, medical support, and then community risk reduction. So one of the proposed strategies is 1.2.2 for the fire department, which is incorporates implementing EMS and medical data into countywide health initiatives and expand the mobile integrated health program. Then we do have an action plan item to support that, that does capture collaborating with our partners to expand health options and those services. So that is something that we will work on developing and I believe is captured in our proposed strategic initiatives.
Chair, Commissioner, so just some follow up. If it does become the political will for this, I don't think you're talking necessarily, Commissioner, specifically to the fire department, but also to the sheriff's department. When I was in central New Mexico, we were actually the provider agency for Albuquerque PD and as part of the crisis intervention team. And that is probably a model that might be more appropriate rather than necessarily growing government or CSD as a provider. And we could do that, for example, through La Sala with the ACT team, through NMS paired with then crisis response. So working with RECC, if there is a call that's within the county, and Roberto, and thank you for nodding because it already happens, then immediately 24/7, they, the, you know, behavioral health professionals trained in emergency response are there to help with de-escalation so that it doesn't, you know, forgive me, but tie up the hands of deputies that otherwise, you know, need to get to the next call. So we do do that through La Sala and also, you know, with ARU, that is an opportunity to scale up through behavioral health reform. It's one of the four identified priorities regionally, if it is something to be considered when you're talking about finding funding to do that. But we would always defer to the chief in terms of their needs. Thanks.
So I just wanted to again move forward to Commissioner Johnson, but Sheriff, you're sitting here with your team and I just really wanted to hear you weighing in on your strategic vision.
Absolutely, Madam Chair and Commissioner Kokari Stone. So, you know, the role I see is the sheriff's office is in support of some of these programs. There's not a specific strategic initiative for behavioral health. You know, there's a training aspect for our deputies in reference to how to deal with and de-escalate those type of situations. But I think, and talking about community support services and supporting those programs like the, you know, the crisis response and an alternative response unit, the sheriff's office is here to support that. And I think we would be in line with being added into the general strategic objective from the county based on training and response and handling of the situation in support of other agents, of other departments for some of these programs.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to advocate for, we have a very explicit strategy or objective that includes you as part of behavioral health or vice versa in our big plan together because even the innovative program that you've piloted, I think it speaks to the behavioral health wellbeing of your officers. So what would that look like if we integrated an explicit statement that made you more visible?
Commissioner, thank you for bringing that up because there is two aspects, as you've just pointed out, there's the public aspect of behavioral health and then there's the employee aspect of behavioral health. And I think, you know, I would like to see that county address both as a strategic objective because they're both important. You can't have one without the other, especially when it comes to law enforcement and public safety. So I would support absolutely an objective to support both behavioral health in the public and with our employees.
Could you work with Stephanie to wordsmith something?
Absolutely.
That sounds awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you for your patience, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very quickly, the agricultural point I want to make with regard to behavioral health, there is a lot of research out there that says that working with the land is actually healthy. It's not just clean air, clean food, et cetera, et cetera, it's healthy. But there was a quote that I wanted to bring up because it's pertinent at this point and it was Don Bustos up north who said it. And I'm going to tell you, the traditional communities in our area, and when I say traditional, I will include our puebloan neighbors, growing corn and a sake is, corn growing and a sake is flowing is a social determinant of health. And that has long been a tradition in the culture that, you know, I go back to, let's protect this land, it's also a social determinant of health. Thank you very much for that moment. On to Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I provided a quite long document, so I will not go through it all, absolutely not. But I encourage department heads and relevant staff members to digest some of the thinking in here. To zoom out a little bit, the way that I approached this process was to think about, you know, five and 10 year viewpoints, looking backward and to think about, for instance, being, say, at the end of my second term, let's be optimistic, what do I wish that we had done? What sort of roadmaps do I wish we had put in place? So I approached it from that perspective to think down the road, a decade from now, 15 years from now, to think about, geez, we want to do that now, but we needed to initiate it in the past. Now we have another kind of lag time. So as we all know, we brought forth, Commissioner Bustamante and I brought forth a resolution for a feasibility study to study a public utility, public electric utility in Santa Fe County, which we passed, and I thank my fellow commissioners for that. That was priority one in the document that I submitted and I called it energy sustainability and community energy democracy. I won't get into more detail about that since that will be sort of de facto in our strategic planning process because we will be doing a feasibility study about that. But I think that it's important to emphasize, and this goes to the next point, then actually the next two priorities really, is to balance the way that we approach the mechanisms through which things happen. So we have the market on the one hand and we have the ability for collaboration, coordination at governmental and sort of at the nonprofit level to do other kinds of planning and making sure that the county emphasizes those. And I want to give us credit because we do do that already and we do it in a degree, I think, that far exceeds regional neighbors. So the next priority that I have has to do with water. So water sustainability and long-term, long-term resource security, and I include in that black water reuse. That's really what I'm talking about when I think 10 years from now, when we have a different water scenario and we're looking at, you know, our plans have changed, what is it that we wish that we may have implemented? And to me, I think that it's imperative that the county study reuse of water in various forms. We are already doing that. I recognize that we're doing some aquifer regeneration projects that will be coming online soon. But what does it look like to do sort of default gray water and black water reuse in our community? Because if surface water, which we, which we use sort of principally to give ourselves water as residents of Santa Fe County, if that water runs out, we have a bunch of paper that says, oh, we have this, but we don't have the water. So how can we improve our resources and our resiliency, which is a word of the day, to make sure that we have that in place? So that is a humongous infrastructure project or has the potential to be. So I'm not intending to, you know, insist that we start building all these pipes, putting them in the ground, but I think that we should consider how we can economically develop infrastructure through, you know, as a local package plants, as a sort of really robust futuristic wastewater treatment plant? How is it that we can think about water reuse? So I'm, I'll stop there in case we have some commentary on that particular issue because we've talked about affordable housing and I want to kind of circle back on that, but let's, if we have comments on that, I'd like to hear them. Thank you.
Chair Bustamante and Commissioner Johnson, I'll ask Brian to speak directly relative to how, you know, the board approved infrastructure projects lay the groundwork for, you know, robust, you know, reuse planning and then also the wastewater, you know, management strategies that are currently being looked at to be brought to the board for consideration in the not so distant future. Go ahead, Brian.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Johnson, a couple of things come to mind when you, when you bring this up. I guess taking a look at our current wastewater infrastructure within Santa Fe County, we border, largely we border the city of Santa Fe. And so if you look at 599 corridor, north of 599 corridor, the central city of Santa Fe, and then the south of 25 corridor as three different zones, north of 599 is county customers. We have about 600 current wastewater customers. All those customers go into the city's wastewater collection system and then goes to the city's Paseo Row wastewater treatment plant. South of 25, that corridor largely SDA 1 corridor, high growth area. All those customers, or the customers that are currently county customers are funneled down to the turquoise trail area, intersection of 599, 14 area, and go to the city for their, as the treatment plant. So we have about 800 customers in that corridor, so about 1,400 wastewater customers total. Reason I wanted to share that is that kind of paints the picture today. The board has appropriated funds, we've had bond sales, those kinds of things that are focused on us building out infrastructure within our SDA 1 corridor, which is the community college district, south of 25. And we have three projects underway in purchasing at the current time for construction. And one includes a interceptor that goes from Richards Avenue to the Abajo lift station at the, largely in turquoise trail area that I referenced earlier. We have turquoise trail, or we have the Abajo lift station improvements that allow us to then not pump the water, wastewater to the city for treatment anymore, but pump it to the county's existing wastewater treatment plant that's located at the state pen. And the third large project is the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant at the state pen, the county's wastewater treatment plant. Those three projects are somewhere in around the range of 22 to 25 million dollars worth of work. Huge undertaking, but this is the high growth area of the county, or as we say, the high growth area. Reason I wanted to share that is we are in the process right now of getting our wastewater in order and centralizing it largely at the state pen. That will allow us to do a number of things with that wastewater for reuse, for repurposing. We're also in parallel, we are working on a effluent management plan. It's in the draft final stages. We'll be bringing that forward to commission in the near future that will look at, what do we do with the wastewater? What is, it's a engineering analysis, but it's also a feasibility analysis on how do we, how do we handle our wastewater in our corridor? I think that'll be enlightening to this conversation and we can get some clarity to things that have been considered, things that are, maybe have not been considered and we can, you know, put an emphasis on how we want to proceed forward. In addition to that, along the corridor of the interceptor I described earlier as one of our projects, we have two, two systems in waiting. We have the Oshara system and we have La Perdida system. They're both package plant systems, to your comment earlier. There are aged systems, systems that have reached the end of their useful life and as well as from an operations standpoint, those communities want to get out of the business of wastewater and want to connect to our interceptors. So there's a movement to move away from kind of small package plants. I think we saw it in Commissioner Green's district with some public opposition around groundwater quality and those kinds of things. I think it's just a challenge we have to be aware of as we look forward to decentralizing our wastewater system and what that looks like and what the benefits are and how we weigh those. Our focus is making sure that we can manage the wastewater in that corridor efficiently at our wastewater treatment plant, make sure that we can treat it to the standards we need to treat it to. And on that topic, we have our current wastewater system, which we may expand in from half a million gallons a day to a million gallons a day, is treated to class 1A wastewater. If you look at the range of wastewater, that's pretty high quality wastewater largely because of our membrane treatment. It may not, we've, you talked about it in your white paper and your list, the concept, it's a real concept, it exists around the country of toilet to tap. We are like one step away from being able to go toilet to tap with that high quality wastewater. Perception wise, may run into some problems, but the reality of that is if we add one treatment process to that class 1A water, it could be potable. Potability, the potable water then opens up the door to other options for what we do with that water, whether we put it back into the taps that people drink out of, whether we, which perception is, could be a challenge, or we do other things with it. So I think that, just wanted to paint the picture that we had, we're well on our way from centralizing wastewater so that we have ability and planning for what to do with that as well as from a treatment standpoint that will allow us to leverage that in the future to get at some of the things that I think you're trying to, you're striving for.
Thank you, Brian. That's, that's really helpful. A couple of thoughts about that. So last week sometime, I got a tour of Oshara and of La Perdida. It turns out there's not actually much to see because everything is underground, but we did go there. So Oshara has a packaged wastewater treatment plant and so does La Perdida. What I, and I understand that they want to get off the system and I wonder if we are sort of jumping the gun and allowing them to, and I think that that may be a phased sort of exit. I think for those- I, I think for those, yes, but for future developments that do have, I think that we should not necessarily think about discouraging package plans because La Perdida was designed to have reusable black water and flush toilets so that you're just, you know, you, you are saving, you know, orders of magnitude more in water when you, when that happens. What happened is that the construction got botched. So if we had better protections in place for, you know, how is this design being implemented? Like it never happened, not a single, maybe one toilet actually worked that way in the entire concept, and there's hundreds of homes there. So that's sad and it's not our fault, but it is something that I think that we, you know, we're the sort of stewards that are, I mean, we're elected representatives of, of county residents, so making sure that, you know, development doesn't sort of just throw it out because it doesn't work for them now because they want, you know, to return dividends immediately. So I, I'm just using that as a, a small example. I'm not saying that package plants are, are the end-all, be-all because I do think that, as you say, what we're sort of aiming towards is a more centralized wastewater system and I fully support that and I think, I would hope that the commission does as well. I just think that, and to excuse the metaphor, but like more pipes towards that end goal could be a way to help us conserve water and also be nimble 10 years from now when we look, look back and say, what should we have done? So I appreciate your comments and I am impressed with the, you know, you, you all are clearly thinking about this. I just am trying to underscore that, that thinking and support you in it.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Johnson, thank you for that. I, I'll just add a couple, a couple of points. So both Oshara and, and from where I sit, both Oshara and La Perdida, it's not necessarily a done deal for connection. They're being studied and we'll go through the, our, our process that we've laid out with, with W-PAC. So they'll be viewed and vetted and come forward to BCC so we can have future conversations or upcoming conversations over the next year or so as our system and infrastructure's being built out, on what that could look like and, and maybe there's opportunities there. Just wanted to, to share that. One point I didn't add, and the reason I broke it out into three areas of, of town, the area north of, north of 599, those wastewater customers, it's not realistic for them to ever really get to our county wastewater treatment plant, the state pen. So they're, we're, we're married with the city in some ways, right? So that, all that wastewater goes into the city infrastructure and then goes to the Passay Rowal. As part of, if you recall, I think it was earlier this year, end of last year, we approved or we brought forward to BCC the approval of the participation with the city in their water planning efforts, the 40 and 80-year water plan. As part of that planning effort, there is a wastewater component to that, to, for this, the county to participate with the city in their wastewater planning for that Passay Rowal expansion, whatever that looks like. I think we put 20 to 25,000 dollars towards that so that we could have a voice in the conversation, participate in the conversation. I, I imagine as that conversation moves forward, from whatever it moves forward, there will be a conversation on what do we do with reuse? What do we do with the wastewater that we treat? Whether it's return flow pipeline, whether it's, you know, existing infrastructure as exists now or in the, in the future. So just know that we have a, a seat at the table in a, in that conversation. In addition to the, also another treatment entity, Las Campanas, north of 599 has their own wastewater treatment collection system and, or wastewater collection system and treatment system. There's been conversations over the years of how do, how does a county participate with them? How do we interact? In some ways, depends on the board makeup and the interests of, of that system as to the willingness to want to participate, but I think that's, they're definitely a stakeholder in that corridor that we can work closely with as we look at somewhat of a decentralized model where it's just serving that corridor and what can we do with it from a reuse standpoint and some of the, the goals that you're bringing up.
Thanks, Brian. So I, I, I think the long and the short of it is, is that I would, you know, like reuse to be part of our strategic plan and that may involve some sort of, you know, county experiment with reuse on our own properties when new facilities are constructed, where we do something that is, you know, toilet flushing, things like that, as a way to, you know, be a leader but also demonstrate our values and to develop our own expertise in, in understanding those systems so that in the future we're not, you know, laying a bunch of pipe later on. So if no one has any comments on that, my third priority, and maybe we'll get to this by one. My third priority was affordable housing development and anti-displacement productions. We've talked a lot about affordable housing today. I just want to think about displacement. So part of that has to do with the rules around STRs, you know, the county has an okay ordinance for them, but no enforcement. That's known. I'm not, I, I don't think anyone would contest that, but I, I think an update on the sort of enforcement in that capacity is, is worth hearing as well as tenant protections. You know, Santa Cruz experienced a pretty egregious eviction issue, what was it, like a year and change now? And, you know, making sure that we are preventing the conversion of affordable housing into, into not, just sort of discriminating against low-income tenants is something that is a concern to me. It's, I imagine it's more of an issue in the city, but the county does have these types of units and I want to ensure that our residents are protected.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, we agree, both with your thought processes around short-term vacation rentals. I know we had had prior conversations about it and some of the loopholes that we have identified along with our forensic growth management. And so to answer that question, it's just a matter of us, I think, moving forward with an action plan to address. We are doing that in some instances where we can directly reach out and connect to some of those folks who, you know, may not be participating in the lodger's tax program. Some of it is a little bit more complicated as we think through, how do you work with third parties to be able to disaggregate data? And so I agree with you on that. I, I, I see Yvonne shaking her head and she agrees as well. And so-
At lodger's tax. We're missing, we're missing something there.
And then with regards to evictions protections, we've got to do some more research to see where we are and what we have and what, what's on the books. And so we will make sure that we follow back up on that as well.
And Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, also want to touch on eviction prevention that we are able to do through community services department and some funding that we were able to allocate in the past year specifically for eviction prevention and not only to ensure that individuals get a little bit more time to figure things out, but also working with those apartment complexes or entities to alleviate issues that arise around eviction.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, it's something that I think we need to be more aware of, especially as we develop our own public housing. And, and I kind of skipped over that, but public housing is, is something that I'm very proud that the county does. It is, it, it partners governmental entities with, with private development or any number of different models that diversify the number of pathways that we can use to create affordable housing. I want to, you know, support what other commissioners have said on this issue. I also agree with, for instance, Commissioner Green about, you know, the missing middle of housing. I've spoken with you, Jonathan, about multifamily developments of various ranges and various, you know, kind of income strata. So I, I want to underscore that. I don't know if we need to talk much more about it, but I, I think that making, doing good by our citizens with tenant protections, and I appreciate what, what you all already do, is, it, it's essential that we aren't evicting our own, our own people also. So my, my, I did add a third, fourth priority, which was fire protection and emergency planning. Commissioner Bustamante already sort of covered the emergency planning piece and I want to, you know, give all credit to you, Chief Black, and your department because the, the fire department is, you know, a, a well-run engine and I, so I appreciate all the work that you do. I, I just want to make sure that we're doing all the kind of monitoring that we are. I know I've pressed before for these sorts of cameras now, and now I'm on satellites and heat tracking and things like that. I, you know, for, for my district, this is a major, major concern because, I mean, water too, but really they're the sort of frontline of where fire is likely to happen and spread. So, you know, I, I think taking all, all precautions that we can, especially the sort of low-hanging fruit-like cameras and satellite monitoring is, is essential, so.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, so yes, with that, one of our continued strategies is a part of our work plan or our action plan to enhance our well-end readiness through multiple avenues, including fuel reduction and identification. So with that being said, we, about this time last year, we did start evaluating early detection systems such as wildfire cameras. During that time, we were looking at proof of concept to make sure that it was, that with emerging technologies, as you mentioned, satellite detection as well, what is, how do we leverage our resources the best? Since then, there's been significant developments. There was one nonprofit group that stood up a pilot program with a camera on top of Tisukie Peak. And additionally, public utilities such as electrical utilities have also established pilot programs with detection cameras as well. It was just announced last week that the state is going to be launching a pilot program as well, utilizing a different program than some of the others. And so with that, we are looking to pursue that and how do we, as a county, come alongside, understanding that fire doesn't recognize boundaries, whether it's federal, state, county or private property? How do we then leverage our resources to collaborate with our, our stakeholders? With that, as we are preparing for our next budget already and looking at that, we are researching to see how, what investments the county can make to enhance those other fire detection systems. If we can partner with the state and add to their network, then we, we cover additional areas and we just, and make that much, that much more stronger. So those are things that we have engaged with, not only our local government agencies such as state forestry, but also our local non, other nonprofits that are, are doing that same work so that we can just enhance our collaboration to make sure that we have the most robust detection and prevention efforts possible.
Thanks, Chief Black. That's great to hear. You know, you should, I mentioned low-hanging fruit, I think putting that in your budget would be, the commission would, you know, approve things like cameras that are $75,000. Those are really small potatoes for us and I think they would go a long way partnering with them. Thanks for the update. I know I seem like a technocrat and so I appreciate, for instance, Commissioner Carrion's community engagement focus. I do want to mention that my neighborhood recently completed, it's a sort of evacuation plan and sort of full prep suite that's a row hondo. And I just want to, you know, I, I think other communities are doing that. I'm not saying we invented the wheel here, but I, I think that coordination is also key. And I know that we do some of it, but you know, the, the more and more that the county, and, and I think the volunteer outfits do this as well as, as well as they sort of meet with folks in individual neighborhoods and say like, how are you going to get out? How are we going to get in? That kind of regional planning for fire preparedness, you do all the time, but the more that the community is aware of it, the more they feel like that they have the coverage. I feel confident that we, you know, we do a really good job, but I think that the outreach in that capacity is something that might just sort of quell people's anxieties. Thank you. And that's it, Chair.
If I could, Chair Bustamante and Commissioner Johnson, you know, relative to some of the STR discussion, there's enforcement-related issues, which again, as Jonathan said, are well-taken and we can work to address. I think there is also a request to do a higher-level look in, in terms of, you know, STR impact on the availability of housing stock and in particular, long-term rentals. And in the vein of collaboration, you know, I wanted to, you know, suggest, if the board was interested, and Alex can speak to this, you know, at the time that the board considered STR regulations, there was an analysis that was done that, you know, looked at the current state and made some predictions. We could certainly revisit, you know, the data using current data sets as well as some of the information we received from non-owner occupied STRs to bring it, that as an update to the board so that you could consider whether you wanted to revisit any of those regulations. But it would be an interim step to actually, again, do a current assessment of the impact of STRs on housing stock. So Alex, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add to that, that idea, but in that spirit of brainstorming collaboration, I did want to suggest that that would be a possible initial step.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. I think one observation I will make is that we haven't really had the program around long enough to figure out, you know, what, what are the issues, both in terms of the market study, but specifically, I mean, I think in your, your comments over and over again, there's a code enforcement issue. Some of that is because of the way the ordinance is written and I think that goes without saying. And then some of it is that we just haven't quite aligned the technology with the practice. So we still have, you know, people who are, don't have permits out there and we find them and they say, well, I'm not running it anyway. And so we say, okay, you know, what else can we do, right? So I think it's, I would say we do want to revisit it. I think we were just starting to build momentum with our code enforcement team. They're really, really making huge strides in that, in, in all areas of code enforcement. So, you know, I look forward to working with, with you on that. I just don't, I'm not quite sure what it looks like yet.
No, I understand that. Thank you. And, you know, I think it, again, it's one of these things that you want to, this is the sort of looking backwards approach. You know, 10 years from now, if we, let's say, change our ADU policy to allow for multiple ones and we have an influx of STRs or something like that, that's just a hypothetical scenario, but it is something that we would regret if we hadn't understood how this is to be regulated. And I think that I would welcome suggestions for changes to the ordinance because I think that it's flawed, but I understand, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying hire a code person tomorrow and send them all around in a car, but I think we're, we, we should move close to that in the next year so that we understand. The lodger's tax issue is, is actually like a big part of it for me where it's sort of like, we're leaving, we have opportunities to develop programs for all of Santa Feans and the idea of allowing STRs is to generate that kind of revenue, so let's get the revenue from it if we're doing it, you know? Otherwise, we shouldn't do it and we shouldn't allow it. So that's, that's my perspective on it and thanks, Alex.
I, I will add just one, one thing on that, if I, if, if I could, if you all, you all don't mind, Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, even with the deficits, the short-term vacation rental market and the taxes that they pay is still the second highest contributor to lodger's taxes in our county. And so-
And you estimated in a meeting with me the other day that about a third are kind of legit, so we're leaving two-thirds on the table or wherever in someone else's profit. of legit. So we're leaving two-thirds on the table, or wherever in someone else's profit.
So to that, you know, I do think, you know, STRs are the boogeyman out there. There's a lot of other housing stock out there that has a bigger impact on our affordability. And so having a comprehensive housing stock analysis, everything from size and type of unit to, to whether they're first homes or second homes, right? If their tax bill goes to another state, right? They're taking advantage of residential assessments and increases. And that may be an opportunity for us to go to the legislature and say, we need to adjust those things because STRs contribute not only lodgers tax, lodgers tax is great, but they also contribute equal or more actually in gross receipts tax. And so to, gross receipts tax actually is flexible money, that if we decided that we wanted to take all of the gross receipts tax that's generated by STRs and put it towards affordable housing, that's a great linkage from STRs becoming part of the solution. Whereas second homes that sit vacant for 10 months of the year have almost zero contribution to our community in tax base and in, and in, you know, eyes and community vitality. So I think a comprehensive housing stock analysis with all the partners, from Espanola to the city, to Edgewood, to, to all of the areas here, we can start to understand our, and that would be a great study for next year. I think that would be something that we could start to look at and maybe have results a year from now that we could look at and say, how do STRs, when fully enforced, impact this? How do second homes do this? What is the pipeline of affordable housing? Our new affordable housing ordinance? And really look at how that pipeline so that we could look and start to say, good, we've gotten ahead of this, instead of 10 years from now, looking back and wishing we had done more. So I think it's an all-and study in that space.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I, we focus on STRs specifically under affordable housing because it was addressed earlier, but I do think that we, there are potential avenues to siphon revenues generated there to affordability, and then we're, you know, doing better. And I agree with you about second homes. We've got to figure that out.
Thank you. If there is nothing else, I think we've gone through all of us. And what are the next steps?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just repeat something that Commissioner Kokari Stone said at the beginning of this, because I think it bears repeating. You know, today really afforded a unique opportunity for staff and elected officials to come together to discuss these really important priorities. And I found it very valuable. I hope everyone here did and found it very good use of our time. Regarding next steps, I've taken several notes. We've got another 30 pairs of ears in here who heard from you what you want to see, what programs and initiatives you'd like to see us all working on. And so we'll start with our draft plan. We'll make some revisions, and we'll bring it back to you in the form of a resolution for final approval. After that-
Your recommendation for tomorrow?
I'll let Manager Schaefer do that. After that, once we have a resolution that has been adopted, we'll load it into our strategic planning software, which makes it available to all of the public. And the public can plan to see regular updates from staff on all of these initiatives. They'll be able to monitor how we're working towards success. Manager Schaefer has some thoughts for sure, so I'm going to hand this over.
I would really say it's at the pleasure of the board. So if, you know, you would like us to reconvene tomorrow so that you could ask questions about our proposed recommendations, or if you would like us to provide an overview of the major changes, we certainly can do that. And in addition, if there is more things that you'd like us to try and study between now and then, again, we're here to serve you. And so I'd really, you know, follow the lead of the board as to how you would like us to use our time.
Okay. What is the will of the board? Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I just want to thank everybody for being here. It was a great discussion. I took a lot of notes. But I'm accustomed of doing 30 years of strategic planning, though that something's still nudging me. It doesn't feel right. We haven't evaluated the progress on last year. Like, what was our successes? What did we achieve together? It's the opportunity to do it together. And then you have here in your staff memo, what do we sunset and archive? I think that step needs to happen. I'm not quite comfortable jumping to, okay, wrap it all up, put it in a draft for us to vote on. I'm not there yet. And again, call me old-fashioned, but a process that's mutual between all of us, I think is so important. The other piece is the strategic alignment, which requires synthesis across the BCC members, across everybody here in your units. And what does that synthesis look like? Because you all have had time to write things out and meet, and this is our first go at it. So how do we, my question to everyone, and, or maybe to you, Stephanie, since you're leading this, is how do we synthesize? Is that something you can do? Take all the documents, synthesize them, take all the notes, synthesize them, and then look at where the strategic alignment is happening? And then how can we have takeaways on evaluation and takeaways on what we sunset?
We'll start with Commissioner Hughes and then Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I think that as far as synthesizing, a lot of our goals were the same or similar, and none of them were contradictory to each other. So I don't know that there's a lot of, you know, processing of our goals. She already has them. She puts them in the plan. So I don't know. Other things we might want to discuss, like where we were in the past, where we go forward, but I don't think, I don't think we're offline anywhere.
Because we didn't have the opportunity to synthesize ours, can we take the synthesized report plus our notes from our discussion? Because my fellow commissioners and I brought up some new emphasis. Can we put that into a document so then we can do a strategic alignment with the staff's document? I just don't want to miss that piece. Otherwise, we stand as a six-legged stool instead of working in conjunction.
For five-legged, sorry. There's not six of us. Commissioner Hughes had the floor, and then Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, I, we can go through it tomorrow. I just think it's a simpler process, and you may be alluded to, but because, because there are no contradictions, you know, we don't have to do, you know, do Commissioner Hughes's, not Mr. Johnson's. It's both and/or. Okay.
So I would propose, and this, I think this is relatively in alignment with you, Kokari Stone, we look at the synthesis of the sort of topics, and we clarify them. I need time to digest them myself. I mean, we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants here, so digesting that. And then also, I would like to request a report. I think it's a good point about the sunsetting. It's sort of like, what isn't working? We do need to know what is not working, or what has been, you know, kind of like not making enough progress. And then we should have the opportunity to ask, why is this element of the strategic plan not making progress? If that is not possible for tomorrow, I mean, we, I suppose we could do it a different day, but because I don't want, you know, people to, well, I'll just leave it at that. So those are the things that I would be interested in, in kind of digesting. I don't think we need to spend all day here again, but I do think there are some lingering questions.
So I pretty much agree that, one, synthesis, it may be as easy as Commissioner Hughes says, but there are definitely a lot of details in it. So that's great that we're pretty much in agreement. There's not that much controversy between us, but there are nuances that should be documented in this. And maybe, you know, when we talk about housing, it's not just a bullet point housing. It's a comprehensive housing assessment that includes STRs, second homes, inventory and things like that. Oh, how do we deal with missing middle? How do we deal with all these different aspects to it? And those, you know, even though it's one bullet point of housing, there's lots of subtopics in there that should be assessed and prioritized in a work plan for next year or the year after, so we know what expectations to come with that. I think tomorrow is probably too soon. I think we accomplished a lot today. I think if we took next week as a holiday week and then tried to look at the first weeks of December or second week, maybe we can do it with some holiday schedules, but it doesn't have to be everyone at the table here. Sorry, guys, I see some frowns at the table, but I get it. But it's really an assessment for us to internally talk about the priorities. And the folks that are on that priority list are the ones that probably need to be at the table more than everybody at the, an all-hand sort of thing. And, you know, having those sunset aspects and all of the different, you know, progress reports is another way to take these ideas that came out today, fit them into what's been done in the past, and sort of let the existing document become a living document and say how, what we talked about today fits into that. And then we can have an assessment and maybe some accomplishments and some sunset aspects that are in a draft. And then we come forward two more weeks later with an actual resolution. So we have an interim thing in two weeks, and maybe it's the first meeting in January or second meeting in January where we can all bring this all together. Thanks.
I was just going to add, we could look at calendars now, or we could do a poll afterwards to target a meeting. We heard everyone in terms of synthesizing a lot of the information, and I think that's a different take on what we were discussing. We can also prepare using what is in Invisio, as Stephanie said, that is public-facing already, reports relative to updates and the like. So we can do that. And if you want to look at your calendars now, we can start to identify a time to do that, probably after Thanksgiving holiday.
Is this something that we have to have done before the end of December?
No. I think the key point is that we finish it in time for the, you know, fiscal year '27 budget process. And so if we're getting it done in January, I think that would help inform staff as well as the board when we're talking about the fiscal year '27 budget. So I think that would work.
So I would add, you have this, but I don't know if you have this electronically. Would it be possible?
Just ask Olivia to send it to Stephanie.
Okay. Because this is very well done, and I appreciate it. And the integration of those goals and objectives that staff have, but I think a synthesis would be very helpful. I agree with everyone else as well. And let's look at our calendars, then. I don't, I agree also that tomorrow morning is too soon to, you know, to really get a good sense of everything that's been presented today.
So before we go, commit to a full other time, I'm wondering if, do we think that this could be a presentation on the December 2 meeting as a part of the meeting?
There's a question on the table. Would this, could this be a presentation at the December 2 meeting as part of the meeting? What is the will of the board? Do I have a-
The synthesize?
The synthesize, like an update of progress.
The synthesis.
Here's, we put it all together. What further? And then we would give guidance for, because we have two meetings in December this year. So we could actually give guidance for the December 15th or 16th, whenever that meeting is, at those meetings, and just do it in bite-sized pieces, not to commit ourselves to crazy amounts of time off schedule.
So do we have, are we in agreement of that? Do we need a vote? Or I'm hearing consensus.
I just want to make sure Stephanie can deliver that.
Notice, good. Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I just wonder if we'll have enough time at the December 2 meeting? Do we envision like an hour discussion, or a two-hour discussion, or a three-hour? I mean, I don't want to go to midnight talking about this.
Eleven thirty.
No, I don't want to go to 11:30 either.
What if we limit it to kind of, you know?
Maximum of two hours, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
The presentation's been too fast.
Okay.
Two hours of the whole meeting.
Of the whole meeting.
Of the meeting, yeah.
Why?
I think that's long. I think we could do it in 90 minutes. Yeah. I mean, I would hope that the synthesis shows, this is what we talked about. Here's some sunset. Here's some progress. And do you need anything more? And then at that point, if there's still some question, then it rolls to the December 15. And then we're ready to-
In the interest of an efficient meeting, going two hours during a BCC, a regular BCC meeting, will kill us. I mean, it's really, the, you know, to be able to just keep it rolling. I would like to say that we would like to see it at 20 minutes is a healthy number, but that doesn't mean that the continued conversation would happen at the next meeting. So I would go with the 20 minutes for the presentation and see how the timing is. And if it's necessary, then that would be continued to the next meeting. That would be a healthier way to go, at least mentally. And I mean that honestly. Is that all right with everyone? Commissioner?
Yes. But could the 20 minutes presentation be linked to the synthesized document?
Yes.
That way we can read it ahead. Okay.
That's what, just want to be sure. That's what it should be. That's what it would be. Does that work?
I would buy a little bit more time for some backwards-looking, like assessment, presentations of things that are working, not working, and recommendations as a part of that synthesis, sort of. But 20 minutes sounds pretty brief, but, you know.
Let's roll with it. Those are the, we can go a little over.
It can go over.
That's usually our-
It's a good target.
It's a good target. Okay. Very good. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.